Basically put noncommunicado.
Well, they're gonna probably.
Our tax assessor.
All the meetings to order? Clerk, please read the meeting notice.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the public and the press on March 14, 2020. It was posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act NJ SA 10, semicolon, four dot seven. The purpose of this meeting is to discuss the township budget and any other business that may come before the council. Official action may be taken.
Thank you. May we have a roll call, please?
For Vice President Boucherey.
Here. I don't think I'm on.
Councilmember Fury.
Here.
Councilmember Lynch.
Yes.
Councilmember Shortway. Council President Rizzuto.
Yeah. Would you please stand with me and go ahead and I pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're all stuck there. Got my glasses on.
Mayor, may we have your comment?
Thank you very much, Mr. Council President. Members of the council, before we get into the details of reviewing the proposed budget, in the interest of informing the public, I ask that you please allow me to share just a brief summary of the budget message that I sent to you, the council, in February. During the past five months, business administrator Chuck Volker, financial, chief financial officer Donnell Bright, and I have been meeting with municipal department heads and reviewing and discussing their budget-related departmental requirements, their plans for 2022. The entire staff started their 2022 budget development process with direction from me that they look for cost savings opportunities in every departmental line item. This year's budget, as it is proposed, has been developed with the focus on the achievement of seven key goals. These seven goals are, number one, to maintain the level of services that our town is required to provide or has committed to providing, while at the same time looking for areas where we can operate in a more effective and an efficient manner. Excuse me. Number two, to continue our ongoing road development program and to replace in an efficient and financially responsible manner town vehicles and equipment that are beyond their useful life. Number three, to continue to pay down our debt and create a pay-as-you-go system for most capital expenses. Number four, to continue to make repairs and improvements to township properties so as to avoid even larger improvement costs in the future. Number five, to move Vernon forward towards continuing to be the type of town that's a good place in which to live and raise a family, as well as a place where businesses want to locate and prosper. Number six, to minimize the tax burden on Vernon's taxpayers as we deal with the negative economic impacts of the COVID pandemic. And finally, number seven, to do everything reasonable to formulate a 2022 municipal budget that does not result in a tax increase that exceeds the current outrageous 7.9% inflation rate. As our residents know, from dealing with their own personal household finances, every year, the cost of most things increase. That same cost increase principle applies to all of the things related to operating an effective and efficient municipal government. For 2022, the cost of all of the goods and services that both our town's residents and our municipal government must purchase as a normal part of their existence will cost even more than normal because of the record rate of inflation, which is caused by COVID and caused by some supply chain problems and a shortage of workers and materials. And it is for this reason that we put, that we put a lot of plan in an effort into keeping any increase in this year's municipal taxes to a single-digit percent and for sure under the 7.9% rate of inflation. I'm pleased to report that in spite of cost increases that are above the rate of inflation, that the municipality must pay to obtain health insurance for our employees. And by the way, that cost is up 14%. And for the statutorily required social security and pension payments for retired municipal regular workers and police personnel. And by the way, that cost is up 8%. In spite of all of that, we were able to be successful in meeting our goal of limiting any municipal tax increase to honor the rate of inflation. This year's municipal budget, as it is proposed, toes a little over $29 million and would result in municipal taxes of just, a tax increase of just 1.7%. As a way of measuring the financial impact of this proposed municipal budget on our town's taxpayers, the municipal portion of the tax on the average Vernon home, which is assessed at a value of $237,500, will be just $28 per year or just $2.33 per month. As you will see during this hearing, this is a financially conservative budget that's prepared, that's prepared to cover the town's real and necessary needs and not some unreal and unnecessary wants. During this hearing, I plan to have each department head to share with the council and the public a summary of, number one, the 2021 projects undertaken by their departments, number two, some of the 2021 accomplishments in their departments, and any trends or concerns that they might have relative to their departments. I look forward to a very, very positive and productive budget, budget development process, council. Thank you very much for allowing me that opportunity. Mr. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mayor.
It is my comments.
This time I ask for a motion to.
May I? May I just say something? I have a comment of you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank Donnell for doing her due diligence and preparing this budget for us tonight. And I like the numbers that you have, but I'm going to ask, even though it is at a low 1.7, I'm going to ask for you and your staff to work with the council to give Vernon a present and make it a zero, a flat budget or a decrease in any way we can. I, I think that we can work together to do that. And I'd appreciate your consideration and helping us.
Most surely, we'll get my 1,000% corporation on that. That does sound like a good goal because we're only 1.7% away. And we'll see where it goes tonight from here.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to go open to the public.
Thank you. I'll second that. Seconded by Mr. Lynch. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries. The floor is open for comments. If anybody has any comments, please come to the podium and.
I have a couple of things.
Certainly.
State your name.
Will you please come here and state your name?
My name is Bill D'Arresto.
I'm sorry?
Bill D'Arresto. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for the second anniversary of COVID. And I'd like for the mayor and the council to consider making a memorial garden somewhere in town for the ones that are neighbors that didn't survive this pandemic. And I'd like also for you guys collectively to work together to make a collection point for the Ukraine here in the city. That's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone? Please step forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Here, council, thank you. My name's Craig Mebeck, Larry Lakes. I just have a couple of things regarding the budget. As you've all heard in the news, reports on a daily basis with inflation approaching 10%, it's costing an average working family approximately $300 more a month, almost $4,000 a year, just to get essentials compared to where we were last year. This is yet forecast to worsen. There is now widespread talk in the financial markets of even a possible recession. Tonight, we have an opportunity. We have an opportunity to help the families, the working-class families, all the families in Vernon, to, to pass a budget that's as close to zero as possible that we can get. I challenge you to get the budget to no increase in taxes. That's all possible. To the council members, especially the three new members, I urge you tonight to review this proposed budget with a critical eye at reducing spending and, and looking at revenues and make sure that we have everything captured that we possibly can. But please don't just stop comparing year-over-year dollar amounts by line item to make the adjustments. I implore you to go behind the dollars and ask the really tough questions. Drill down to the activities that the budget dollars represent. Ask, are there any new programs proposed or expansion to existing programs? If so, question, is this really the year to be doing that? Can we defer until future years? Any increase in clerical or office staff would not be a year to increase staffing if we can all avoid it, with the exception of any increases having a direct positive impact on public safety. Consider any current programs that are being performed marginally or not yielding the results that we would expect to get and cancel or postpone. This is a year where the town council and mayor must aggressively consider the impact of spending on seniors with fixed income, young families getting started, and working middle class in general. Most of us already have tightened our belts, and it's time for the town to tighten its belt as well. So with that, I suggest defer, cancel, and let's get as close to zero increase as we possibly can. And if it goes negative, hallelujah. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do we have anybody?
Yes, I have Jesse Palladini.
Mrs. Palladini.
Good evening, council. I just want to say first and foremost, I want to say, and this is precisely why we cannot afford things like new trails, town parks, and that sort of thing. And that should have never happened. And that's water under the bridge. Yesterday, I had the pleasure of being at a gathering with Vernon residents and also my family from Tenefly, New Jersey. The Vernon residents that I was with, in celebration of my birthday, by the way, live in an upscale home in Vernon, $600, $650,000 or so. My sister lives in a $1 million home in Tenefly. And we were talking about taxes, and I was absolutely floored to learn that the resident who lives in Vernon pays exactly the same amount of taxes, about $16,000 plus, as my sister and my brother-in-law in Tenefly. Yet, the mayor talks about level of services. What services? We have none. In Tenefly, they get water for that money, sewer for that money, garbage pickup for that money. They have a landfill dump that they could go to for free and, and get rid of anything. They have leaf pickup in the fall, and I'm sure there are things that I'm forgetting. But it's just not right that we live in Vernon and get no services, yet pay the same amount of taxes as people who live in million-dollar homes in Bergen County and get all of those services. As far as COVID is concerned, COVID may be responsible for increasing our grocery bills, yes. But I'm going to go with Councilman Lynch and say zero tax increase. And I want to remind Councilman Lynch and Rizzuto, I'm sure they remember well, that when they were in office last, they had four years of zero tax increases. In fact, the first three years were tax decreases. Little, yes, but still tax decreases. For the mayor to say that we are keeping our increase to single-digit percentage, I've never known a budget to increase double digits. It's always been 1%, 2%. So what he's proposing is, is really nothing.
Thank you very much.
Wow.
Last three minutes.
Oh, kind of abrupt, a little rude, but thank you. Well, it is.
I apologize if it seemed that way, but I'm just notifying you. It's three minutes.
She'll have another chance.
All right.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I don't have any other hands up.
No? Okay. Anybody else from the floor? Not? Yes.
Sean Clark, and I live up in Larry Lakes. When it was announced last Monday, you guys were going to have this meeting, I jumped on the phone. I tried to get a copy of the budget. I was going to make it available to a lot of other Vernon residents who are far more experienced in accounting, budget management, project management. When I called down here, it was not available. And I repeatedly asked and I questioned. I was told by other people that the budget was available. In an effort to reduce our costs across the board, I encourage you to involve more of the citizens like myself, who ran a multimillion-dollar company. Granted, I wasn't in accounting, but I could oversee managers and we made a massive amount of production. There's a lot of talent in this town, and there's a lot of people who wouldn't mind volunteering their time to help the staff that we pay to do a better job and reduce the cost. But it's virtually impossible to have some input if you can't see the budget until you arrive here, which I assume it's made available, correct? If you're here, you still don't have. So we're here, we're all here.
Excuse me.
To listen.
Before you.
Go ahead.
But what you have here tonight is the council examining the mayor's submission of a budget. Once that budget is approved by the council, there's a period of time between the time it is approved and the time it is formalized. Okay. And, you know, perhaps those numbers would be available. But then the, the, the budget is introduced to the township. And again, there's a period of time between that time and the time that it's finalized.
Thank you very much. I was aware of that, and I'm sure a lot of the public's.
It's, it's the way the governments work. So basically, what I'm saying is, right now, it's being formulated, and that's why we're here.
Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome. Anything else? Anybody else?
No, I don't have any hands up.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to close the public.
I'll second that. So motion is made by Mr. Fury. Seconded by Mr. Lynch. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries. All right. Mayor, you, I see you have brought a number of your staff with you this evening. If you'd like to ask them to, if you want to handle it.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. The way I'd like to handle it, with permission, I'd like to go through each one of the departmental budgets. I'd like to have that first introduced by the department head, and then whatever questions that you might have relates to that. Who would we have up first, Donnell?
The first would be administration and council.
I'll defer because I'll be here all night. So let the people who.
Who's, who's, who's next?
And then it would be.
I mean, I could, I could do that also, so that staff can.
You can put yours at the end, too.
You just did to me because I would be next. We have tax collection. I know we have Lisa on Zoom.
This is Lisa Kimkowski.
Number 11.
Kimkowski.
Yes.
The council, she's a tax collector. Would you, would you tell the council which tab that's on this?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. It's tab 11.
Tab 11.
11.
Excellent.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, you have a table in front.
Okay. Lisa, are you ready?
She's there.
The Zoom meeting, Mr. Lynch.
Excuse me?
You're the Zoom meeting. Yep, the Zoom meeting.
Yep. Go back to her.
Lisa, are you, can you hear us?
Muted still?
No, she's not muted.
Okay.
Hands up.
There'll be a connection. I don't know.
We can go back and go back.
Go back to her.
Ex-assessment.
Next one.
All right.
And it's tab 12.
Tax assessor.
Ex-assessor, yes.
You're in person.
It's a lady that had some stuff to talk about this year.
I think all department heads will be going over this. We were asked to talk about our projects we worked on in 2021, our accomplishments and our trends and concerns within the department. And so I have a little bit of a list. Obviously, I think most people realize the big project within my department for the past couple of years and for the going forward is the annual reassessment program. This is an extremely time-consuming project, but I do believe it is the most fair and equitable way to handle taxation. I would like to take this phone at times. I know the council has had this question for me in the past, and I can now say officially that we are no longer the only municipal county that has adopted this program. Over the next couple of years, there will be probably three to four more. So this is kind of the way of the future for assessing, and it's something we'll continue to work on. It also is in line with what the mayor said. It's our, our way to contribute to our pay-as-you-go goal for the towns. We don't have to take out debt to do revaluations anymore. We just include the annual reassessment within the budget. In addition to that, we also work on added assessments. We defend tax appeals. We contributed last year to the 2,000-foot kind of parameter for cannabis sale, retail sales. My department is very involved in, if there is a location being considered for cannabis retail sales, we help determine what properties are within 2,000 feet in accordance with the ordinance of parks, schools, daycare, those kinds of things. We also helped out quite a bit with the municipal auction last year. That was very successful. And also, in the fall, we're also obviously doing farmland assessment, application review, and inspections. Accomplishments within the department is we have significantly reduced the amount of appeals lost at the county tax board. We're helping stabilize the ratable base. We are still working on closing out a really large backlog of tax court appeals at the state level that were going back to 2014 year. So when I started in 2019, there were well over 300 open dockets. I would say even closer to 400 open dockets. And we're now down to under 200 open dockets. We've had success with settlements and also with several withdrawals of tax court cases. And that's something we're going to continue to work on. In 2021, we only had one new tax court case filed with the state. There were continuations of prior year appeals, but only one new tax court case filed at the state level, which is really great in a long-term goal of reducing the amount of legal costs we have and appraisal costs we have in defense of state tax court appeals. In 2021, we added more ratables to our ratable base through added assessments than we lost of appeals. And this is really important and kind of goes along with the annual reassessment program in that gaining more rate of new ratables, not just through a market increase, but gaining more new ratables through added assessment than we lose through appeals helps stabilize the tax base and helps stabilize the tax rate and helps decrease the amount of increases that need to be collected through everyone else in town. So that's a really, I think it's something that's overlooked within my department, but it's something important.
Can you explain what an added assessment is? I think I know what it is, but maybe you could explain it.
It's, it's not, a lot of people think it's just a new house. And so it's not only just new construction, but also if someone puts something small on a new deck, or if they renovate their kitchen, or they put an addition on, all those are new ratables that we add to the ratable base every year. And so that's new tax dollars that we can collect. And that equal, that means you could increase the budget by so many dollars and not affect anyone else in town. So that's why it's important. So for many years, this town was losing more ratables through appeals than they were gaining through added assessments. And that, what that does is puts more burden on everybody else in town, and it doesn't allow for a stabilized tax rate at all. And so I think that's kind of like a really small piece of what we do, but it is overall very important. And so I'd like to continue moving forward in that direction. My trends and concerns for the department, my biggest concern really is the open tax court dockets. We still have between 150 and 200 open, open cases in tax court. We are aggressively kind of prioritizing them and working through them. But when they go back to 2014, it's, you know, there's a lot. And so that's something, while I always talk about how I want to lower the legal fees for tax appeals, that is going to take time. And we are diligently working on that with our tax attorney and also our expert appraiser, appraiser for tax court. I want to continue maintaining uniform and fair assessments in line with market. That's going to automatically be done through the annual reassessment program. You know, this year, we saw a big increase because of how the market is. I, it's important for me to stress, should we see someone spoke about possible recession, should we see a decline in the market? Of course, the assessments will follow that as well. That's really, it's continuing working towards stabilization of not only the ratable base, but the tax rate itself. And so then we have our, my department, my budget is kind of, kind of just is what it is. We have two union members in my department, and so they receive salary, you know, just whatever the contract.
Yeah, the contract. We had, is 2% increase, but steps. So we, it's not always just a 2% increase. They have step increases every year on their anniversary, on their, sorry, January 1st. We just changed that.
So, so we have, you know, we have the salary thing with the union there. And then as far as the operation budget.
Can we go back to salaries?
Sure.
Your, your regular salaries, 8.5%, you're looking at a $16,000 increase from year to date of 189,500 to 200, 205,000, so 16,000 approximately difference. How do we justify that?
I will, I will say, so the year-to-date number that's on here, 189,545,97, we actually have to transfer additional funds to cover the retros that we had to pay.
Are you telling me that your, your year-to-date should be equal to your W2s, right?
So these, no, that's not necessarily true. Because when we, so we settled the UAW contract in this, so those funds are backcharged to last year's budget. So the 2021 budget is still active. These 20, these, for all of these departments, the year-to-date, 1231, 2021, was as of 1231, 2021, when I completed this. But things have been charged to those accounts since then.
Yeah, but this is, this is salary, this is salary and wages.
Right, but.
Are you telling me that there is still, there, there's still a differential between that and your, meaning you have to capture additional funds for that account for later on?
Right. So the retros were backcharged to that budget. So at the time, the retros were not paid until 215. So.
What retro?
You'd need retro pay.
In retro pay. Right. So the. In retro pay. Right. So the contract was still, it was still in negotiations, right? So all of those
I see, okay.
increases were not made. So whenever, and that was for all of 20.
Numbers are going to go higher.
Yes.
What you see here is not
Yes.
when it's final.
Right.
When will we?
And I can provide that report, um, for the reserve budget year to council tonight, if you wanted. I can, I can email that.
That would be helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, it would be.
Definitely. I, yeah.
Yeah, when this.
So is that going to be accurate for almost one?
In January. So it was before all of those amounts were charged.
So you're looking at something that's going to be even
Be higher.
Even
One, one, 90.
Half percent, then 8%, 8.5%.
Well, no, there would be, there's an increase in the year to date. So, um, it's not going to change the difference between the 2021 budgeted amount and the 2022 budgeted amount. But it will change the amount and the year to date charged.
Well, that's, you know, that's what I go by.
Okay.
I really don't care about what was budgeted. It's what we spent.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, because you know, if, if you didn't spend it all, I know where it's going. All right. So, and you know, and, and that might be a particular way in which you, you choose to fund those accounts. But, uh, you know, so to me, I think what you spend is, is the most important thing. Maybe I shouldn't say that because everybody's going to run around and go spend it towards the end of the year, but.
Is, just to be along the same line, same for every department.
I was going to ask that question. So is that, so, so when I'm looking at 2021 year to date for salaries and wages, that number
Is going to change.
is going to be inflated. It's, it's really not an accurate number for.
For every department.
The, it's not inflated. It's, there's actually more.
Yeah. So it's going to be inflated. It's going, it's going to be a larger, okay.
I just want to make sure that every.
So we don't have this question for 24 times.
Doesn't happen. It's just because the way the UAW contract, it wasn't settled.
Except for your non-union employees, right? That's your 12, your 1231 number is your 1231 number.
Yes.
So there's not going to be a change on that.
But that's also, um, I do want to make it clear too, that even in the year to date, um, other expenses line, the O and E lines. So that might be the amount that was charged as of 1231, 2021, but we still have bills coming in.
Yeah.
You know?
That I understand.
That will change. I mean, that could continue to change for the next few months.
Oh yeah, that's.
I'm good. Um, no, I'm good for that for now.
That's the only question I had is.
Over, well, for Kristen or, or just salaries?
First, no, on the, uh, if you want to move into the, uh, subaccount.
If she was done.
No, 30 set line, 37?
Our tax, that's our, that's our budget for the appraiser, tax court. Now, I had anticipated for this year, and as you're aware, because we had an executive session about it, we were scheduled for trial in March on a fairly large commercial appeal that they ended up settling at the very last minute. Um, so, but like I said, we have between 150 and 200 open dockets at tax court. Um, and we do kind of have a priority in which we're working on them. But at any point, he could be requested to write an appraisal report, and that could be extremely expensive, even if it is on a, if it's on a commercial property specifically.
Okay. So, so I, I understand you said you had about 150 to 200 because this is just such a hot, you know, you, you budgeted, you're consistently budgeting 20,000. You, you paid 1,500 in 2020. 5750 this year, maybe more, you know, depending on, I guess, if there's bills coming in.
A little bit more.
A little bit more. So, um, I, I just wonder how many cases, you're not going to do all 200 in one year.
Oh, no.
Yeah. So, so I just, I guess I question, um, budgeting the, the consistently budgeting the 20,000 when you're not spending it. I mean, I understand taking in inflation and additional costs and, and maybe increasing a budget a little bit the next year. But this is, you know, more than tripling what you spent this year. So that's what I, you know, that, and that's just the eye that I'm, I'm going to say this to everybody. I'm not being critical, but I, that's kind of the eye that I'm looking at each line where, you know, what, um, where, where do we have some room to trim? So that's a question that I have that maybe in light with what Mr. Lynch said and what the mayor agreed, we can look at lines like this. And is there a little room?
There probably is a little room here. It's just a matter of what the year that we are gonna need to spend.
Well, I mean, even if we double it.
Be able to get it, you know?
Well, I mean, we have a savings account. I don't know.
Saving.
Call what it was like, the pre-COVID numbers were.
I don't.
Starts COVID.
Right. Well, it was different. It was different though, too, when Kristen took over.
5 or 40,000, and I cut it, my first year here, down to 20.
Yeah. So we, so.
Wasn't needed.
Yeah. So we only see COVID years here. We don't see.
No, that's true. That's.
So I don't know.
Because no court cases are going on, both on criminal and, and, uh, others.
Yeah. So I, I mean, I guess it would be interesting to know what 20, yeah, what 2019 is. Maybe look at that, Kristen.
You think we could do $3,000?
Off?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm very comfortable cutting it for this year. I'm nervous because we're going to be focusing on an exemption case this year where he will not be involved.
Okay.
So he might have to get, step in on some residential cases, and we have a hotel and a restaurant. But I'm fairly confident neither one of those commercials will go to trial. He might need to write a report for negotiation purposes. And I'm.
I mean, you don't have to commit to a number now, but I mean, let's, you know, like I said, this is something, and that's kind of, you know, just to be fair.
And then the other line.
You making a note of this, Donnell? Are you making a note of this?
Can I ask you a question?
I made a note.
I'm making a note, too.
We're looking at what was spent versus what is budgeted. The other biggest discrepancy obviously is my education and conferences. The reason that that has not been spent is.
You're not going anywhere. Yeah. So hopefully this year, people will go places.
I've already gone to one this year and, you know.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
Certification renewed, you know, kind of shows back in this, this year. So I have to start from zero again in July, but, um, pretty much everything else would just shifted around a little.
That was the only one thing that I just kind of noticed was that, you know, a significant difference between the two. But I appreciate you looking at it closer. Thank you.
One question. You mentioned when the bloom goes off the rose, you know, when the bubble goes down and values start going down. Will there really be a decrease?
In the assessment, absolutely.
Yeah.
But the taxes.
You mean, we're going to give money back?
Well, so, so
The great front office.
Of the municipality this year is seeing a reduction due to the reassessment and the assessments went up. The job of the assessment is to determine how much, uh.
I'm, I'm, I'm not laughing. I have, I've spoken, you know, in that I've now on the council, I, I'm, I don't know, maybe people just come, want to come up. But I've had more people this time come up to me and say, what in the world is going on? You know, I'm getting whacked, you know, by taxes. And I tell them essentially, be happy. If you're planning to move, you're going to get a lot more for your home. If you're not, I can't help you.
Right. So ultimately, the tax dollars depends on the county school and municipal budgets. And the assessment's function is to divide that up based on market.
Right.
And so I know it's really hard to have a conversation like with Mr. Lynch in a neighborhood that went up, and my neighborhood is going up a lot as well. But it's hard to have that conversation with someone and be like, well, you know, but 60% actually benefited from it.
Yep.
So there is going to be some shifting based on the market as far as taxes go. But I think what's really important for people to understand, and I understand wholeheartedly that everyone's definition of a large versus small tax increase is going to vary. But the budget is the budget is the budget. The reassessment doesn't change the amount of money that needs to be collected. And so if someone saw a 600 to $1,000 increase this year, it's not going to happen year over year over year. It's just not because our budget isn't going to go up that much. And so maybe they'll see a little bit of relief next year, you know, it kind of depends. But, um, overall, those, the people experiencing the large increases, a very small percentage of the town. And this year, you know, it might, my 60% is going to change once we get the final, um, tax rate. But the impact of the reassessment alone benefited 60% of properties in 2022.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kristen. Before you leave, I wanted to make a comment.
Oh, sir, go ahead.
It's a real quick comment. I just, I want to thank you for, uh, you know, when I reached out and contacted you, you were extremely helpful and responsive and, and that can't, that shouldn't go unnoticed. Because that's, that's what, that's what you, I mean, you did it, you responded, you, you took care of the issue, you addressed it, and, and we need more of that.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Same.
Thank you.
Just to let you know, I got a text from Lisa saying that her microphone's not working. So she's going to, I asked her to try to reboot to see if that'll change it. She said she just used it the other day for a Zoom meeting. It was fine. So we'll.
So we'll go.
Uh, land use, is Kim on?
Kim is on.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes. You want to start, Kim? How are you?
Good. How are you?
Thank you.
Do you want me to go over my, uh, projects for last year first or my budget first?
If you'd like.
Why don't, why don't you do the project, Kim, if the council doesn't object? Why don't we, why don't we just do that format? Why don't you start off with our, with the list that we've got, and then we'll go to the budget detail?
All right. So last year we did, there was 11 applications before the board and one carried over to January. Um, we also did the town center redevelopment plan. We also did the 525 Route 515 redevelopment plan, which was the gas station, Circle K. We did the Theta Drive redevelopment plan, which was the car wash that's coming in. Uh, we did the 70.1 annual update zoning report. We did the storm water control ordinance, uh, the cannabis ordinance for cultivation and retail sales. We did the plan endorsement approval. We did multi-generational family accommodations, which well, now we don't have anymore. It may come back someday, but the council tabled it. And we also were working on the master plan and we actually finished that up last land use board meeting. Those were our projects for last year. And then if you have any questions on my budget, feel free.
Proposed budget went up $19,000. Can you give us a heads up on what's going on now?
Talking about just salaries?
Yeah.
Salaries.
That's what it is? It's all salaries?
Um, not all salaries. Uh, there is an increase in the salaries. Um, while there are no union employees in this, uh, department, we did budget 2%. Um, we also increased the budget for the part-time, um, code enforcement official to be more in line with some other local municipalities that are close by. Oh, and also, sorry, um, there is a new employee where part of her salary is charged to land use, part to fire prevention and part to building. You'll see that. There's some larger increase.
22?
Departments, yes.
That's the council for that.
So it's a new employee for, for this year?
Yes.
But the, the employee, they haven't hired him yet, personally?
No, that person is already working.
He worked last year part-time.
Started in 2021?
Uh, part-time in 2021 and then, um, became full-time January 1st of this year.
And their full-time salaries fit between the three departments. So each department has a portion of their salary in this line of, line budget.
There's about 16, oh, sorry, not 16. There's about 10,600 in this department.
That wasn't there last year.
Correct.
Is there part-time salary in it last year?
Uh, no, there's a different part-time salary in there. There's a part-time, um, what is it? Part-time code enforcement?
Yes.
I don't know what it's, thank you. Um, so that was already in there, but this is additional part-time, um, like secretarial, not secretarial, like administrative staff.
Great. So that's brand new. So we still have the part-time code enforcement and then we have this, okay. Thank you. That's helpful.
So what is up? That's a new employee for land use, code enforcement?
It's land use, fire prevention and building department, construction.
Okay. She's multi-talented.
She's administrative.
Administrative.
Those departments.
Administrative support for all the departments.
Okay.
So again, you'll see this in other departments.
Yes.
Helpful to know.
With regards to your professionals, your attorneys, your engineering and your, um, your, uh, planner, are you anticipating greater need for these individuals next, coming year?
For next year? No. This year was, um, more about the master plan.
Okay.
So, um, I wanted to key, I wanted to just make sure that we had enough in there. But come next year, when all of that is done, you'll see a significant decrease.
So for 2022, you're saying you still need those?
Yeah. Well, we were just working on the master plan, so I mean, we may not need that much in this year, but that's just what I wanted to, that's what I anticipated, but it doesn't mean it's going to happen.
Dinell, uh, Jessica Caldwell, the planner, do you anticipate, um, more work from the planner in regards to all the work that's being done with the sewer service area and the planning designation? All that work that we, we talk about a lot.
So there, so, okay, so there's two lines in the budget for planning. So one is on the administrative side. So that's anything that the mayor, um, would ask her to do. Um, and then the other side is for planning, like for actual attending the land use board meetings and being there to review plans that come through land use. As far as the sewer service area, um, I don't know of any work that would require Jessica to be a part of the sewer service area.
Wouldn't affect our budget anyway.
I don't.
Your own budget.
No, 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 because, because.
Explain this.
Yeah. So the township last year, um, got approved for a state, uh, the town center through the state planning commission. Those regulations, the DEP regulations that have to do with sewer service area dictate that if you have an approved town center through the state planning commission, that that area is entitled to be sewer service area. So I have reached out to Jessica to just confirm that with the state planning commission because there are issues with the DEP accepting that. So I don't anticipate though Jessica having to do anything. I think, I think everything is, everything's already done for the town center designation. As far as anything further, I.
And she had to do it. It wouldn't be under the land use.
It wouldn't be under land use.
Be under administration.
Correct.
So I, I just want to clarify, Lisa, you said, um, in 2021, one of the projects was the, uh, master plan. But that's not complete yet. So that's carrying over into 2022.
It carried over into 2022, yes.
Okay. So you're still paying our league professional services, planner, engineering, legal. So those, because I, again, I don't know if you heard what I said, um, regarding the tax assessor budget. I'm, I'm kind of looking at different lines and seeing, you know, where, you know, there's a little bit of room. Um, and I see, you know, 2021, um, retainer for planner, we spent 22,000. We're, we're still budgeting 30,000. So is there a little room there? Engineering services, same thing. Legal, legal services, same thing. So, so that's just kind of, you know, some notes that I made when I was reviewing it. So I don't know if you can speak to that or if there's a possibility that you have some, some room, um, based on, you know, what you're anticipating your bills will be, um, i- if there's some, some cuts you can make there.
I have a question about the master plan. When does it have to be completed? Is there a statutory requirement to have the master plan done by it? Would she know that answer?
There is. It's every 10 years the master plan has to be completed.
When was the last one done?
The last update we had was 2012. And we had just finished, like I said, the last land use board meeting we had, we had our public meeting and the master plan is finished, just waiting for resolutions. And then that will actually, I will be passing that up to council.
So the master plan is finished?
It's finished right now. Yes. We're just waiting for resolutions. All the bills are not paid yet, but yes, there will be, I'm sure there will be a little room to cut.
Okay. Yeah. So, so then that's what I'm asking. If you could take your, your pencil, I guess, and, you know, the advertising, we only spent $400 in advertising in 2021. And that's a little, you know, not, not a big thing. Um, recording secretary, the retainer for the planner, engineering services and, and legal. I, I think there's room, um, you know, based on what you anticipate your bills will be, that, um, you know, maybe you can, can make some adjustments there.
Absolutely. I just want you to remember too, though, two, two years of COVID. That's why, that's why you see very low numbers.
Yeah, I, I definitely, um, I definitely understand that.
But if the master plan. But if the master plan is, is, is completed, then there's, you, you're not going to anticipate a lot of engineering, engineering and planning cost.
I think it is, um, important to know, and Kim, you can correct me if, if I'm wrong with this, but, um, a lot of, a lot of what is coming across the board or land use board, like you don't necessarily know what applications are going to come in and what aren't, right? So we don't want to, like you said, like if you want to do trim, you trim some, but we don't like cut it down.
And I'm not asking that. I, I hope that that's not the perception. You know, I'm not, but I, you know, trim.
No, I get it.
How do we, how do we get to what both the mayor and Brian said, if we don't trim?
Maybe we can look at another three thousand there.
Yes, I will definitely take a look at it. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for what you do, Kim.
You're welcome. Thank you.
For doing it so well.
Thank you.
Next department.
Bob, are you available? Yeah, I see it. You, you want to start, Bob, with our, your, your list of, uh, twenty twenty-one projects, accomplishments and then trends and concerns?
Bob, you're muted.
He's muted. He's definitely muted.
Bob, you're muted.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, now we can.
Okay, sorry.
Two thousand twenty-one projects, uh, they kind of all, believe it or not, all intermeld with each other except one. First one was, we talked about issuing penalties, but not for the statement of issuing penalties, but again, for, we were, when I started and it's important to note that last year, two thousand twenty-one was the beginning of my first full year here in Vernon. I started in the July before that. One of the biggest problems that we had, and again, it goes back to things like what Kristen says and all that. It's, it's getting people to pay their fair amount, et cetera, and especially through the permit process. So it was, uh, you know, last year we really tried to hone in on a lot of work that was being done around town. Believe it or not, even with COVID, there was money around and, and people were spending it, but they weren't really getting permits. The other second part of that was trying to hone in on final inspections. And people could say, well, what's the big deal on final inspections? It goes back to exactly what Kristen said. I tried to get as many COs, certificates of occupancy and TCOs out of our office, even the backlog that I found, because when that hit Kristen's desk mid-year, we were enjoying Vernon, that is, a hundred percent of that tax increase. It was not shared with the county and it was not shared with the school system. So, um, and I did come across many, many houses in town that, believe it or not, did not have certificates of occupancy, which is illegal in itself. And, and a terrible liability on the town. But, uh, also a lot of people who were stringing us out for TCOs, temporary certificates of occupancy. And for good reason, but a lot of it is a way of beating the tax system. The second, uh, item here was that, uh, we completed almost seven thousand inspections last year with, really, you got to consider me just a part-time inspector. Pat and Paul are our full timers. What happened is, is that we got Pat and Paul up to snuff on multi-licenses. The electrical inspector has his electric fire mechanical in building. The building subcode is mechanical plumbing and is now in this, getting his fire. This allowed us to go to A stop and A inspection where there was two or three disciplines and make best use of one person going there. The customer loved it, builders loved it and, uh, saves gas, saves time. The bottom line is that it, it, the, the numbers don't lie. We did seven thousand the year before. We did about forty-seven twenty-one. And the year I started, we were doing, or, and, and now this year, which is January first today, we're a year to date at twelve sixty-one. So I feel very comfortably, we're going to be right in line there with that seven thousand inspections, which again is very important when you're trying to run a town this size with literally two and a half people, uh, on the road.
Can you explain, Bob, can you explain to us why you're a part-time inspector?
Well, because Brian, I, I'm spending so much time in the office that they, one of the biggest problems that I told the mayor and Chuck when I interviewed and both sat back and looked closely at operations was the, the office cannot be run by the ladies. People want to see this, the, the certificate for the, uh, construction official, so they have to have regular hours. And I, I really do chase a lot, a lot of things into office. Other than that, you know.
I'm, I'm a firm believer that many hands make less work and, uh, I, I just don't want anything to get overlooked because the, uh, the amount of work that's being put on two inspectors or three inspectors is different than, than four.
Agreed. Definitely agreed, Brian. And, and it's something, you'll see on my trends and concerns. We're doing very well. And again, I'm licensed and everything, so I go out when, and, and, you know, when I have to, not when I have to, but they schedule me out and I'm out in the road. But I think it's important to know, uh, just to, to cut to that segue. If we get much busier, and again, please think about it, busy means dollars. And we all know the intent of the depart, of the, the Uniform Construction Code Act and the DCA is for at least the building department to be self-sufficient. And I think, you know, we're there now, but I don't know how much more even three of us can do, especially if things break loose at Legends or whatever. A couple of big projects will probably sink this and we probably have to be at least looking for a part-time. Not trying to cross that bridge now. That would be just something we would need to discuss if something big hit the, 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 uh, uh, our doorstep.
I have a question about that, Bob. Hi. So you, you talked about something, you know, a, a big project coming. Are there agencies that you could hire, like a vendor for a special project, rather than hiring another employee? Is that something that?
You can certainly hire part-times and all that, but if you, you have one of two choices in a town. When you go to the DCA Department of Community Affairs, you either say, you, you have to declare what type of town you are, one, two, or three, or four, number one. And number two, you either say you're going to have your in-house, your authority, have a jurisdiction is your in-house department. Or you have to give it to the state like a lot of other people do in Sussex County, which is a real problem. Because they don't get the service. Or the third option, man, is that to go totally within inter-local, which some towns do, they have shared services. It all depends on how busy your town is and how quickly you want to turn things around for your taxpayers. Quite often inter-locals, the town who sponsors it, and Chuck will be the first one to say it, the town who sponsors it is the one who makes the money everybody else loses, including services. But those are the three ways.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
How many people do you have working in your office right now?
Right now.
Besides yourself and the inspector?
Uh, we have Mary, Angie, A- Allison DiLorenzo and a part-timer, Mindy Martin. So I have three, I would say three point five or three point four people in, in what I call the front office.
Right.
And there's, then me, Pat and Paul.
Right. And they can't handle a lot of the work that you feel you need to do so that you can go out in the field and perform the inspections?
Um, I, I, yes, there's no doubt about it. Mary, Mary, I know we're not supposed to mention names on here, but the lead TA, yes. But again, it, I, I just noticed that I think the reason, and again, I'm not going to say a failure is I'm not going to pick on anybody, but the previous CFO, when he left the office in the morning with thirteen inspections, where it suffers is definitely the backside of the office, which I hate to say it. If you look at my, my income that went from four twenty-one to last year, six oh eight, and this year we're running one thirty-four for the first, uh, you know, go another first two and a half months is because somebody's got to watch the numbers, the updates, cost of construction, et cetera. And, and Pat, like again, not mentioning them, the two inspectors, subcodes do so much of that also. That's why they have to have an adequate, at least one day in the office, a plan review. To answer your question, yes, certainly it, it can be done. And, and it, there are people there capable of doing it. I guess it's, depends on how much and, and the buy-in that those employees get. I mean, as far as, are they watching that the same criticality that me and the subcodes are watching? Again, uh, just again tied into the, that whole thing with taxes. Last year, and this was a big project, we closed well over three thousand permits, which is up seven hundred and seventy-six from the, uh, year before. And, uh, right now we're about, uh, seven forty-five year to date. They, they, these are all of the accomplishments that I feel, again, with, in that and a multiple license, turning over the CFOs quickly, TC of O's is number one. Turning around, especially minor work permits in, in what I say forty-eight hours or seventy-two hours, which is pretty much unheard of around the county. But getting them out of there as quick as possible because it, it's usually money in the bank, the checks right there. Doesn't take any plan review, but it, it is important to get the heavy hitters out. And if everybody thinks the heavy hitters are new homes, it's not. It's the large-scale additions which require CFOs. I had one the other day, two thousand and ten. The people finally got their final. And I know I could tell by the permit history, they were dragging their feet because of, they think it's taxes. Little do they know, the minute some of that hits the tax book, they're, they're already getting taxed. But I, the sooner I get it over to Dave and Kirsten is the, the sooner that we enjoy that tax benefit. So those are what I consider to be the projects and the accomplishments of the department. And I certainly will walk you through my budget.
I have a question along the same line, Bob. Along the same line as Natalie was asking. If you had to, um, hire somebody, is, are there like, um, companies out there that possibly provide retired inspectors, um, that could, that could work in a part-time capacity, but not receive any, you know, benefits, medical benefits pension? Is, is there, is there such thing?
Like a temp agency, so.
Mike, I, that, Mike, I had, uh, I have two guys in Sussex County that I'm working with now, who are both retiring from the state DCA. That told me if they ever, if they're ever needed, they'll gladly come over, um, on an at-will basis sort, sort of thing or whatever. You know, our, I'm sure Donell and Chuck could speak to it better. I, you know, I don't believe, unless they go over a certain amount of hours, they wouldn't get any benefits at all. And most of them are not looking for benefits because they're going out on full retirement with the state. The answer is yes. I think we could easily pick up one, a, a very, the, the, the best possible guy that we can get without mentioning a name, I'm not saying that, is a multi-licensed guy. A multi-licensed guy who has minimally building, plumbing and mechanical would be ideal, but we're not there yet. I don't want anybody to think we're there yet.
So I, I think, I think no, no agency, that's what you were saying.
Yeah.
No agency.
Personal contacts.
Individuals.
And they're out there.
He's kind of cultivating those individuals.
They would be private contractors more than anything.
Correct.
It would be, wouldn't they?
No.
No. The IRS dictates what is an employee and what is not an employee. So if we dictate to them where they're supposed to be and when they're supposed to be.
They're an employee.
They're an employee.
But they would.
Oh, they would have to be an employee?
Yes. But that being said, when you retire from the pension system, um, I mean, you kind of have a choice, but not really. If you decide to work part-time and you make over five thousand dollars a year, we're required to offer you DCRP, which is almost like a 401K. That's the best thing I can compare it to. But if you opt to take that for that DCRP, then you can't have your pension payments. So most of the time people will not opt to take that, um, but we would still be required to pay social security and Medicare taxes. That would be, yes.
It has to be an employee? That doesn't make any sense.
It can't be, because we're dictating where they're going to be and when they're going to be there.
That's the definition of.
Not a contractor coming and doing it.
It's the term of employment.
I'm going to show up today and do these inspections today rather than you, yeah, right. Makes sense.
You can't hire a contractor and pay him as ten ninety-nine. Because the contractor can't pick and choose what jobs he wants to do. He's being told what, he's being directed what to do.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah. And again, it goes back to that, that DCA terminology. They look at that contractor now as you're, you're lowering your level in your town. So you either have full-time and part-time, even if that part-timer is eight hours a week, he's still a part-timer. After that, he becomes like a contractual people and then you're supposed to declare your agency as a third-party agency. It's all or nothing.
The other key part of this is that they have to maintain their certifications for the DCA. That's why you don't find agencies out there that are doing it. Plus, up here in Vernon, there's just not a lot of people like that. The fact that Bob's cultivated the connections for possibly two people sometime in the future, if needed, is very good. Before, uh, Bob started with us, we had a plumbing inspector that was coming up from, uh, almost from down from Raritan. He was traveling here three times a week for a part-time salary. Right. Just because there was nobody that answered the ad except for him.
So to be an employee, but part-time employee, that's why you don't have to pay the medical benefits. So you just, it's just, it's a terminology.
Yeah, that's correct, Mike.
It is kind of.
We're paying them on payroll.
Yeah, it's on payroll, but. I got it.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay.
Can we go through your, uh?
Absolutely. Yep. Um, my building salary and wages, um, is now up at four eighty-two with the, uh, Mindy or the, uh, part-timer, which I guess is up seventeen thousand from, uh, last year's budget. You can see my year-to-date came in very close and I probably would have been dead on, except we had, uh, a, an employee who was let go earlier in the year. So that position was left open for, uh, almost three and a half months.
Yeah, but you're, so you're, you're looking, you're looking at a, an increase on your year-to-date, twelve thirty-one to twenty twenty-two, uh, of basically what, uh, to almost thirty thousand dollars, right?
If his employees though are union, as we mentioned before, with the issue in tax assessor's office, three of those are in UAW.
Okay.
So that they, they got their, again, they got their retro pay.
On the retro pay. So the year-to-date is not accurate. It's going to be higher.
Okay.
Okay.
Right. And it, it does, um, include that part-time individual. The bulk of her salary is in here and the two percent increases for non-entire.
That's what Danelle was talking about, that, that's the employee we share now between fire prevention, construction and, uh, land use.
Okay. All right.
Um, and the other budget, uh, you can see I've just gone up, uh, I guess, uh, two hundred and fifty dollars.
You don't have any room there.
No, but I do, please, I, and, and in an effort of, I totally agree with where you're trying to go. Malley, I, I just want to let you know, it looks like a big deal between membership and, and I think one other account, because there's a wow, you really haven't used it. I need to explain two things. With COVID, we had minimal things where the guys go out of the office for training. The biggest thing is every three years, and this year is the year, every three years, the state of New Jersey adopts the model codes from across the country, international code, ICC, uh, codes. When it happens, believe it or not, we must spend at least eighteen hundred dollars on code books. And believe me when I say, we don't buy three, one for each guy, because we're right sitting next to each other. It, we're talking about electric building, plumbing, fire, mechanical, gas code, everything. We are by default, they, they adopt the new codes. We had six months to adopt them in New Jersey, which we do, and I have to buy code books. This is the year for that to happen. Otherwise, I think I would have been able to shave that down a little bit. So I just ask that you remember that because that's, we, in past couple of years, we've been good with, because we didn't buy code books. We also couldn't go out to seminars. I don't know, by the way, if we're ever going to be going out to seminars at all anymore, because everybody's loving Zoom. But I, I've kept, I tried not to go up in the budget. But I, and I, I went down where I could, but I, I just want you to know that, that, that I really don't have a lot of control over that. And I just need you to know that. a computer line is our spatial data logic, which is a fixed number that it that Chuck negotiates in administration. And again, I have no leeway with that. Those are my heavy hitters, otherwise I gladly give you back three thousand if I had to give you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Bob, good job.
Thank you, Mayor.
Tab seventeen, I'm sorry, tab sixteen. And before the chief gets started, I just wanted to make a correction, because I had a a little bit of a mistake. Under Police Department salaries and wages, where it says O slash S detail, that's the outside detail. So that expended amount, that two hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars, I just want to make very clear, is not taxpayer money. Those are outside entities that pay us, then we reimburse this account. But money gets held in the trust, so I just want to make that clear.
Okay, that's O S outside, okay. What kind of entities pay that, like, is that grants?
Anything, no, anything from like Verizon.
Okay, yeah, all right, sorry.
Now we go to.
So before I get started, I I'm going to go through some of our projects and accomplishments, some of the forecasts for some of the concerns that we have this year, coming years. And also, as I jump into the budget, I like to do the captain credit, he's my right hand man. We work hand in hand through all of our expenditures, we do everything we can to be as financially responsible as possible. And if I'm not here, the captain's handling it, and we have the same exact mindset when it comes to fiscal responsibility. We're very aware of the times that we're in and how important it is to keep things as low as possible. With that said, the captain also puts together the budget for me for the police department, he does a fantastic job, so thank him. As we move into this, there's some things that I'm going to go, captain can explain that better than I can.
Keith, thank you so much, such a good job down there. How much did he pay you?
So I'm just going to jump into some of our projects that we had last year. Last year was year three of our police vehicle fleet upgrade, that's through the enterprise program. Here is going to be the final year of that program and it'll be fully phased in. Last year, we also had the Vernon Township Police Phone Radio Recording System upgrade. That was an emergency repair when our old recording system started to fail, which is obviously a major problem for us. We implemented the police drone program, our police drone program has four certified operators. We use that, it's critical for our search and rescue missions, missing people. It's also worth a twinkle goal when it comes to hikers on, yeah, the Appalachian Trail, Stairway to Heaven. You know, we're putting all these people up on the mountain, searching for people where we can put a drone in the air for much more cost. We worked with the DPW, they did an excellent job, one of their one of their fabricators actually helped fabricate and retrofit our existing police jail cells last year. This was a major project. And we need to do that because last year, the Department of Corrections decided that certain police departments that had certain construction were no longer in compliance with the Department of Corrections to house prisoners. So we are waiting final approval from the Department of Corrections on that upgrade, but we actually did all that fabrication right in house. It was a major cost savings to the township, DPW did an excellent job with that. We upgraded our computer aided dispatch system specifically to accommodate fire department enhancements. What that really means is we're able to give the fire departments better record keeping information for their state mandated reports that they do. It was part of the project when we initially started back in two thousand thirteen with that CAD. It just wasn't an expense that we were willing to take. We've been an excellent client for our vendor for almost ten years now, he offered that component at half price to us. We jumped on it, and it's an awesome service that we're able to provide to our fire departments. And that's in the final stages, hopefully in the next week, so that'll be, that'll be live. We upgraded our new to a new barcode scanner system for our, it's called the Beast, which is our police evidence management system. What that did is it made it much more time efficient for evidence processing, as we're taking evidence and everything's on a barcode system. Couple of great projects we completed, we successfully negotiated four new animal controlled shared service agreements. Those agreements with Hamburg, Hardeston, Lafayette, Noggin's birth. Those total new shared service revenue, we are now bringing in an additional fifty three thousand eight hundred dollars. We took over the animal control in two thousand eighteen, Phil, part of the police department, under our expanded control. Very hard to expand the animal patrol to take on shared service, we were very happy with last year. We also renewed two animal control shared service agreements, that's for Franklin and Montague, those are the ones that we we initially stepped off on to go outside of boxes, start taking towns, we were able to renew their contracts last year. And that's also bringing in an additional shared service revenue of twenty eight thousand three hundred. Some of our twenty twenty one accomplishments, the Junior Police Academy, we're very proud of the program. That's for grades six through eighth grade in our school system. And twenty twenty one, we reached.
That's a great program.
We also, last year, we successfully taught the LEAP program, this was an initiative that began in two thousand nineteen. This is for our students at our schools for the fifth and seventh grade. This replaced the DARE program, unfortunately, what had happened many years ago, that DARE program kind of fell out. And one of the initiatives we took over in two thousand nineteen, working towards, you know, being a part of our community and, you know, associating our officers with kids, was to implement the LEAP program, so we've successfully done that, as I said, fifth and seventh grade last year. Last year, we also worked to enhance our cybersecurity features for the police department, this is a major item that every time we have our insurance meetings with our with our insurance vendor, which are quarterly, we added in the multi factor authentication, basically, it's the same thing happens, you log into your bank, you get a text message to your phone with a specific six digit code, all of our employees now do that, so nobody can easily hack into our systems. Now, it requires a six digit login. We worked to stabilize the existing low band fire radio for our fire departments, it was a temporary fix, but we did do that. There was a lot of communications issues up at our comedy tower and myself, and one of the DPW employees went up there, and we actually worked to stabilize that system. We completed the New Jersey Attorney General Use of Force overhaul, which happened in the entire state, we tackled that problem. That program for the police department last year, that included retraining, updates and an online portable, online portal. Now, all the use of force incidents are directly reported right to the state, right from website. Speaking about that money that CFO was talking about before on the outside service detail line item. We implemented a new program, this is something else that we had an eye towards that we wanted to accomplish. So typically, anytime any sort of vendor wanted to hire a police officer for an outside service, that job would come into us, the phone call would come to us. We would then have one of our specifically assigned officers, who would be compensated to handle those jobs all throughout the year. He'd get his compensation, and then he would be the one that would help to schedule officers for outside service overtime. So we looked at outside vendors that could provide that service to us, and not only did we find an outside vendor, but it reduced our costs, which was awesome. It also, they provide liability insurance for each officer on every single outside service job we work, which comes first before it even touches our insurance, so if anything happens on an officer on an outside service job, it starts with their liability coverage. And also, it eliminated, this was the big one for us, eliminated vendor payment delays. Because what would happen is you would have a company in an emergency, I'll just use an example, electric company comes in, a telephone pole just got snapped, they got to hire two cops to go down there to do traffic control. That money could take quite a while for to come into the township, for the township to be reimbursed for that sort of expenditure. Now, what happens with this vendor is, the vendor that electric company would call our vendor, the vendor schedules everything for us, and our vendor extra duty solutions pays us, and they chase down our vendor for their payment. So.
This is a problem down in other departments too, because I heard from other departments telling that they they don't pay the police officers until they get paid from the outside vendors a lot of times. So we're.
That is illegal to do.
Really, well, it's Hudson County, so I mean, it's. Nothing knows, right?
But it eliminated a lot of issues, we were having vendor pay, so we're very happy that program is up and running and working. We did hire new police officer, Lucas Anderson, he was a replacement, we did that last year. We completed and implemented something called April Training for all of our sworn police officers, this was a major undertaking. It's called Active By Standardship for Law Enforcement, it was an Attorney General Directive that we had to upgrade and complete this training for all of our officers. We did partner with the Recreation Department and the PAL, and we coordinated a few major community events, including the Trick or Trail, Christmas Tree Lighting. And then we also worked with the Recreation Department and Christmas Tree Train, Christmas Train, that's actually a really fun program we had. This year, we're looking forward to a lot more programs coming, unfortunately, what happens is COVID hit, so a lot of our programs were shut down, but we're looking forward to this year coming up. We did develop and implement a new single tone for all our companies. What that does basically, instead of the old days, you'd have to go through every single fire tone to dispatch four companies to structure fire, to whatever event was going on, now there's a single tone, you press one button, it's all their all their pages at the same time. We implemented that program, that explains dispatch. We began utilizing our administrative corporal, he's one of our police officers, he outfits our new patrol vehicles. So he outfits them like they're his own, which is unbelievably awesome, because he takes a lot of pride in his work. Corporal Kumar, I'm not supposed to name people, but I'm going to give him credit, because he does an awesome job. We realized the significant cost savings when we're outfitting and retrofitting our police cars. We could strip old equipment off, replace new equipment on it, instead of taking it to a third party vendor, he'll throw it out here in our ballpark for us. And he does it like it's brand new, he does a great job. I didn't mention that already. We conducted four traffic case studies, these were done in house by our traffic safety officer. We realized a savings because they were done in house, we didn't have to go to an outside vendor to conduct our traffic case studies for us. That happened at four different roadways, locations in Vernon Township. They were in response to resident complaints at the request of the administration of Vernon Township and also of my direction. We continued to develop police community relations through several different initiatives, social media message boards, senior groups, in person guest speaking appearance appearances. And we implemented a Share the Keys program, this is done in our school system, that's done for new drivers in our schools. We also conducted a food drive to resupply the food pantries within Vernon Township that were heavily relied upon by the community during the COVID pandemic. Concerns that we have coming up this year, one of the first ones that just came to fruition, there is a new law, it's called the Offer Up Narcan Law. This is going to greatly increase our expenses for Narcan. Basically, what happens now is we go to somebody's house, and we have to Narcan the person, and they refuse medical attention, they don't want to go to the hospital, which is eighty five percent of our Narcan patients, we have to leave them a brand new Narcan kit. Narcan kits cost about seventy dollars, it's an unfunded state mandate, we've pushed our complaints right up to the Attorney General's Office, to the prosecutor's office. But at this moment in time, there's no supplement supplementary funding for that, so.
How many, how many would you provide a year, like, based on last year's numbers, how many of those cans would you have to provide this year?
I mean, it just really, honestly, it just depends, they come in so many different waves, we have some waves where we're very grateful that we have lower overdoses, it just depends on time to year.
Hundred, five hundred?
Not five hundred, it's in the, I'd say considerably just below a hundred. Maybe seventy five.
That's fine, I mean, I'm not going to hold you to it, but I like, I don't know, like, I just didn't know where the neighborhood was, so if it's, at least I know the neighborhood of the number now.
You know, you could have problems where somebody overdoses today, we Narcan them, we have to give them a Narcan kit, then we go back tomorrow, Narcan them, I'm a Narcan kid. And if this happens two, three times in a week, all of a sudden, you've given potentially multiple Narcan kits.
That's sad.
So we also had to implement, this just came in at the end of last year, the New Jersey, New Jersey Attorney General mandated new requirements for New Jersey law enforcement diversity and hiring practices and promotions. This plays into our our recent resolution at the end of last year, as it relates to alternate ways and tools in our toolboxes to hire new police officers. The New Jersey Attorney General also mandated this year that we complete something called ICAT training, all police officers have to go to this, it's a two day training. That's specifically de-escalation training, we're doing that now as we speak, we're sending all our officers to that. We also have, it's been on the horizon for the last about six, seven years, as New Jersey is going to a uniform response to active school shootings. This is called the Northern Red Training, it's extremely costly costly, and the training is time sensitive, it takes a tremendous amount of labor and time for our officers to be going on these programs, they take about a week for our officers to go. We have thirty three officers, so the amount of money and time that it takes to send officers to Northern Red, it's really almost insurmountable, but the last two years, it was postponed because of COVID, so we're waiting for that to start up. Some projects that we have coming up for this year, we'd like to review hospital building facilities upgrade for the animal control, through adequate operation with the addition of four more facilities in which we are handling shared service. We would also like to review headquarters, a possible flooring upgrade, our floor's been there since the building was built. Of the utmost importance is the upgrade for our next gen nine one one system and a dispatch center, the next gen nine one one. We met with the New Jersey Office of Emergency Telecommunications last month, and they're anticipating the next gen nine one one to be live in spring of next year. And with the way that all of the vendors are going right now, across the state, every vendor is, every municipality that has a dispatch center is getting quotes that needs to upgrade to this new next gen nine one one. What's going to happen is depending on where in line we fit, will depend on when that hardware and software is going to be available for our system.
And that's in the budget?
That's in our capital.
In the capital budget.
Capital budget?
To the very end, so the the new nine one one system.
It it says, okay, yeah, it's in there, so it's on a capital budget.
Right.
Yeah. I'm just talking about the projects.
Yeah, we want that.
Yeah. Also, another project that we're in the middle of working on as we speak is negotiating the Fire Department Antenna Agreement with one of the township. We've had an agreement in place from twenty twenty through twenty twenty two, they rent out space on our on our panorama tower. We'd obviously like to continue that relationship and maintain their antenna on there. Some of our goals are continue to develop strong community relations through our police initiatives. Continue to work closely with our Vernon Township first responder partners to bring the services we provide to the next level for our residents. First responders include our four Vernon Fire Companies, EMS agencies, and OEM. We're going to continue to reinforce and develop our policies and procedures, our rules and regulations that ensure best practices to help minimize the liability exposure of the police department. We want to continue to maintain fiscal responsibility of the department as a high priority while maximizing our police services. Most importantly, we also want to maintain a high level of morale amongst our officers.
I have a question.
Sure.
The animal control shared service agreement. Where's that reflected, I did have that question about how it's how it's reflected in the budget. And 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 the question I have is, why is it under the police department and not under animal control?
So we actually have one of our administrative sergeants, he's assigned to multiple tasks, one of his responsibilities is he is the supervisor in charge of animal control. For all intents and purposes, there used to be an animal control supervisor. No longer works at Vernon Township, they didn't replace him, and what they did is they took one of my administrative sergeants, and they made one of his responsibilities now is animal.
Is animal control, so that's why it falls under the police department.
Got to do more with.
And the fifty four thousand dollar revenue that that comes in from that shared service agreement, right, that that, when did that start?
That's that began this year.
So that's 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 going to be seen under the anticipated revenue?
Yes, so just like grants, so grants and shared services have an appropriation and a revenue line for each one.
Okay.
But you'll see, when we get to the animal control portion of our budget, there are some increases specifically on certain light items, the reason is, is because we took on so many more towns. So now we have more supplies, we have materials, things that we need to do, but at the same time, it comes.
And that's why you see it there, and that's why you see it there.
And you had a shared service agreement before, I mean, you had a shared service agreement before with Montague and Frank.
Do you think that is a real benefit, but what's your opinion on that?
We're evaluating that, we evaluate it monthly, we sat down with employees at Animal Control along with the sergeant, and we we asked them what their opinions were, we wanted to give it a go. I mean, that when when you get to start getting involved with animal control and that the work is over to animal control, they're selfless. I mean, they do more work than they're than than is on his favor. We asked them, we said, let's evaluate it every, you know, for the year, talking to the chief, talking to sergeant, the sergeant in charge. The, that's why we did one year for the four towns, we have a three year agreement with Franklin Borough, which expires, I think, in twenty four. And we reevaluate that, we have Montague that we went year for year from year because of the distance.
Yeah, the distance.
And we're we're just starting to evaluate where we're going to be at, and how much of the caseload it's going to be, how many more animals we're going to intake, how many we're going to adopt out with the employees that we have, because it's important to note that we haven't added any employees either.
Yeah, so you did a one year, that's that was smart, because we see how it is.
As of right now, at this point in March, we're making money and it makes sense.
That looks good, we like that.
And to balance that with whatever improvements you might need, I mean, I guess, because you mentioned. And to balance that with whatever improvements you might need. I mean, I guess because you mentioned there's improvements.
We need to, we need to see what combinations are we going to be reaching capacity? Do we need to look at some extra dog runs? Those are things. That's why I put in there, we're going to review that as we continue through the year. We're coming into the cat season where everybody tells me about cat season. So. We're police officers. If you would ask us twenty-seven years ago, if we were even talking like this, we'd say, no. It's kitten season. There's two or three kitten seasons during the year and then we get an influx of stray cats. We have T and R programs. We could go on for another hour, just about, um, control stuff with our T and R programs that we have, which is trapdoor release. And different things like that. And I'll, I'll explain a little bit more once we do get into the.
Okay. Yeah. I don't want to.
Where I went up and some of the things that we do to offset some of the monies.
I have a couple of questions about your, your budget. Um, you have in here that you spent thirty-six hundred dollars on, uh, uniform replacements and now you're asking for six thousand. Can you give us a heads up on what that's?
Sure. So uniform placement, that specifically covers, well, uniform placement when items are damaged on jobs or any sort of an event. But that also covers when we hire new officer, new officer, when we outfit them is somewhere in the ballpark of two thousand dollars.
Okay. Cause you have uniform allowance and then you have uniform replacement.
Uniform allowance is actually contractual.
Oh.
Contractual item that goes to our administrators now.
Okay. All right. Back when council president Mizudo and I were on the council in two thousand and ten and eleven. We had a resolution come before us from the police department because you needed to buy AR fifteens. Do you remember back then? I think we bought like, I don't know, was it twenty of them? I, I could be mistaken, but, and we bought like, uh, a hundred thousand rounds of ammunition?
I don't know. I think I was a hard sell on that one.
And I, I want to know like, where are we with our armament and ammunition? Are we okay with it? Because I, it's almost like the fire department had the problem where the air packs kale came due at one time. And then it was a three hundred or five hundred thousand dollar expense. Can you tell us where we are with that now? Because it's, it's a lot of money.
Sure is. So we're not looking to replace our AR fifteens anytime soon. They're in great, fully functioning order. We don't have any issues. We do send guys specifically to armor school. The more of the problems that we have are handguns. We shoot a phenomenal amount of rounds through our handguns. Just, just from basic, you know, mandatory training. So as actually, I believe it's in this year's capital project upgrade for the end of this, for the end of the presentation, our new handguns for our officers. That's one of the, one of the things we're looking at.
Yeah.
Because really what happens is you just get to a point where you get, you approach the end of the service of a life and all we're doing is just replacing parts. But again, we send officers specifically to the armor school for that. As it relates to ammunition, we do everything we can to try to forecast a year out with our ammunition. Because drop shipments could take a year on ammunition lately in order to even get them. So it just really depends if we have a different flux in the cost of ammunition. One of the things we're looking at is we're looking to move to a nine millimeter handgun next year because the ammunition is a little bit cheaper. And everything has proven that it's just as effective. Everything that we've reviewed, I'm not, I'm not the, uh, the armor in our police department, but I could tell you armed range instructor. Who I've been with for twenty-one years now. If he recommends something, he says this is the weapon of choice, I believe.
Ammunition coming up a little bit easier?
Well, actually I was just speaking with one of the other chiefs in the county and he told me he's one year out on his order that he needs placed for his ammunition.
So not having ammo in the stores, you know, trickles back to you guys too, doesn't it?
It does. To give you an idea, the, uh, I know a guy.
Yeah.
I did get a request, I did get a request that came down from the attorney general, it's just a couple of weeks ago, weeks ago. Asking us where we were at with our ammo supply. Because they wanted to ensure we had adequate supply in order to do our qualifications this year. And that's, that went out across the entire state. So I know we're, we're, we're lucky that we forecasted and we say, okay, we need to make sure we're buying enough to cover our training. But there's probably some towns that just are, are very, very low, I'm sure.
What is the serviceable life for one of your, your pistols?
Well, we, um, working on almost my twenty-second year and I've had two handguns. So I would say somewhere in the ballpark of about ten years.
Ten years.
I think that's pretty fair.
Yeah.
Do you guys have any other specific questions? You want me to start going through?
Your budget?
I mean, you know, what I've said to everybody else. That's my question. Yeah. The, the, you know, the differences between the year-to-date and the budget, if there's, you know, if you, if you have an, an expense upcoming that that's, you know, that that's anticipating or if there's room.
Um, I think I was going to say, I think in light of that, there were, there's two specific items. So like tuition reimbursement is probably a good one to explain.
Sure.
And, um, the service contracts, which was with your, those two.
They're highlighted.
So if I, if I can show, if I can have you look at educational conference seminars and tuition reimbursement. Those line items used to be connected many years ago. And what happened was we were hitting problems where tuition reimbursement is a contractual item. So if a certain amount of police officers are going to school and they're going to get their tuition reimbursement as per the PBA contract. We need to have adequate funding to cover that. The problems that we were having was there was officers going to school and we couldn't account for the entire year exactly how much it was going to cost. Our officers decided in the second half of the year in the fall, hey, I'm going to start going to college. Those two line items were mixed together. So we had officers that we were trying to send to training, state mandated training, all these things that we needed to do to keep them. Obviously our liabilities down and to keep their training up. And we weren't able to do the education as we, as we needed to, because those line items were combined. So we separated those two out. So education conference and seminars, you could see that that's
That's consistent.
Hundred dollars of what was actually spent. That's because we maximize our education and training. We want to invest as much as possible. We actually wanted to go up on that this year because I think training is really a really big proponent of, a component of police, of police work nowadays. But we just realized that wasn't financially possible. So we did not ask for an increase in that line item. But the other line item of tuition reimbursement, that's a contractual item. So if at any given time, the officers start to go, like this year, we were fortunate, COVID was going on. You could see in twenty twenty that there was five thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars spent out of that line item. Well, that was right at the beginning of COVID. So also in, you know, twenty twenty-one, you also have COVID, so not as many guys are going back to school. You may see this year, a lot more guys going back to college are going for official degrees.
How many?
I mean, realistically fifteen thousand is for a college. For you, if, if a lot of your guys go, that's, that's not going to go very far.
Well, many, many years ago, what happened was there wasn't enough money to cover the expenses. And what happened was everybody was splitting it. They tapped out that account to the max. And then that was a contractual limit. And that actually prevented guys from going back to school because what happened was instead of getting reimbursement, continuing education. All of a sudden they found that they were in a position that they weren't getting reimbursed a full amount of their tuition.
How many?
Makes sense. It's as it flows too. We have, we have a bunch of new police officers coming in. So they might, we, we try to push, just like with everything else, we try to push education. Try to push them to further professional development to go through with education. And like the chief said, there's mitigating factors that happen with it that we can't control. But that is the gist of it is that, that, that's put in there for the worst case scenario because it is contractual. It's in, it's in the, the contract. We have to provide that to them. That's why it's.
And do you think you have enough money in, in the budget to cover that?
Um, like the chief said, we, we have it right now. And I was just saying, it's as it flows. We don't know from one year to the next. You might get a bunch of guys that are like, let's finish up. Um, like the chief wants, is finishing up his courses, a couple of courses. We just had one of our officers finish up with a bachelor's degree. Then as we can all attest to, then families start happening and then all those education plans go on the wayside. And we, we do see the officers coming in with associates that, that's when they usually go, go.
The younger ones.
Sort of to, and, and to talk to them and to continue with education.
Yeah. And that's good.
As opposed to that, like we have the fifteen thousand dollar, the budget for education seminars. And like, like the chief also said, is when we're doing that, there's just more training. I wish I could, I could double that and send my guys, but then I need guys on the road that we have state mandated training. And you can see through our history, we usually tap that out, whether it's Northern Red Training or some other things. We, our big push in the last two years has been de-escalation. Instead of going through, do a lot of things, verbal judo classes like that. Where, you know, the more, the more educated our officers are, as you can see even by, by, you know, our use of force and everything else. It's just, it just helps us out and makes it a lot easier for us with management also. What, what, what are the things I just want to comment on is, and I know that you're going to look at some areas in this budget and you're going to say, okay, we came in a little under here. But then we also came in a little over here. And that's because of all the years that we've been working with different CFOs. Pretty much the interpretation that we always got was at the end of the, at the end of the day, that subsection just needs to be positive. There has to be money in there, right? So because what happens is it's a living, breathing animal throughout the year. And we have a lot of employees. We have a lot of different things that happen. All of a sudden the state mandates Narcan for us. Well, where does that come from? And we're in the middle of a budget year. Now I have to start spending an extra thousand dollars on Narcan. Well, I, I can tell you that definitely is not included in the original, you know, line item. If they come out and they mandate some sort of another state mandated training, we could forecast that they did ICAT. I don't know what else they're going to forecast this year. Is that all of a sudden going to eat up my entire education conferences? You know, seminars line item where I'm going to be drawing from some other section to say, okay, well, you know what? We didn't have to use all of our uniform replacements. So we're going to have to draw a little bit of that in here to cover this. So it, just to give you an idea of our mindset where we look at it, we, if we, if we're approaching somewhere in the fall, we're going, okay, we're starting to go over on this area. Do we need to draw from right here? To try to keep everything as equal as possible. Just, just so you know where my mindset is.
I have a question about, um, like overtime and, and two thousand and one and then compare it to two thousand and twenty-two. Do you anticipate less? Because, because you know, we're at the end of the pandemic. Um, and there, and was there a lot because of the pandemic?
So we hit a couple of significant challenges last year. You know, we had two long-term officer injuries that were out. They were out for almost a full year. And it's beyond our control. They, they, they ranged from different COVID-related injuries, uh, which we had multiple COVID-related injuries throughout the year. I mean, we're on the front lines and you know, we get ambulance calls and we have to go do CPR on somebody.
And that's it.
Have to go do CPR on somebody. I mean, that's just.
It's all pandemic related.
Pandemic. We, we were outfitting guys in Tyvek suits. We were limiting staffing. We did everything we possibly could to protect our officers. But inherently you're sending them in to people's homes that are COVID positive and they're being exposed. And then they come back and then, you know, you could, you can't de-contaminate them. You could do everything possibly right. And then three or four days later, you find out they're sick, but now they've already been at work. They've been wearing masks and they're around their other officers. And now you have a whole squad out. Those things.
There was an enormous challenge.
To try and mitigate it.
It's not, it's a challenge.
It was, it was unique, unique in that we get an I-one call and we have to go. If somebody needs CPR, we're going to provide that service because that's what we're here to do. And we're on the front line doing it. Um, but unfortunately, you know, not every department is in that position that you know full well, I'm sending this person into a COVID positive house and there's nothing I can do.
Okay. Thanks.
And to, to answer, to add on to your question, um, last year's budget, we did cut the, cut our overtime. Thousand dollars of the chief always said, so I've been using this, this year, uh, we always think about the trades. We forecast for the worst and hope for the best. There's one homicide or one big case that's going to eat up a lot of our budget. When, if you look through our history, you know, we go through whenever there's a pandemic or a hurricane or something. And then you usually drop down, you'll see in our past, and I believe it's on here now, where you go through in two thousand and twenty was one eleven. You know, that was, that's where we normally stacked. And we have to prepare for the fact, because we have been in the situations where when we did try to trim. And like I said, we did take fifteen thousand dollars because we're like, we haven't hit this in a while. Well, let's, let's cut, you know, and let's give back and, you know, and then the pandemic hit, we go over a little bit. So we, we have to have an eye towards that. And we use caution when we, we go ahead and wanting, look at that and say, all right, we're doing really good. Because as you can see in twenty, we were doing great. And then twenty-one, twenty-one comes along and then we do have something and it just happens. Every couple of years, we forecast and we try to go ahead. So we're not coming to the council and saying, we're in dire straits. We don't have any.
That answers the question. Thanks.
What is the service contract line ninety-one?
Service contract that encompasses everything from our IT vendor to our service maintenance agreements. We have maintenance agreements for our nine-one-one system. We have maintenance agreements for the actual nine-one-one center itself. Thank you. We have LawSoft. LawSoft is our actual CAD vendor. That's where all of our document management system is. We went to a cloud-based email Microsoft mail exchange system. Because what happens is we had a, um, an issue where our email system was hacked. And all of a sudden we couldn't access our emails. We couldn't send emails. And what we found was through our IT vendor, if you go to a cloud-based system, it's much more protected. So there's some enhancements that we specifically did at the multi-factor authentication I was talking about earlier. These are things that our insurance company looked at and they said, okay, what can you guys do to make your cybersecurity much safer? And that is a direct reflection in some of the service contract increases we had. We moved to something called NiBRS. That's the, that replaced the uniform crime reporting that goes ultimately to the federal government. Now NiBRS does that. Now NiBRS, we go directly through our CAD vendor and it links up to the federal government. We push that through. That's in there. We have something called Bit Defender. Bit Defender is our antivirus for our network. We also do things like TLO people searches. That's when we're working investigative cases and we have criminal investigation going on and we need to identify and locate people where you've been able to use like TLO.
So that represents a seventeen thousand dollar increase. We'll ask you as year-to-date.
So the, there was an increase going because right now throughout the county, they're going to a new LPR license plate reader program in the county. So Spart is going to be implementing a certain amount of cameras in their, in their town. We're looking to do two in our town. Andover is looking, uh, the prosecutor's office is looking. And that what happens with that is it's all shared information. So it's actually, it's a great investigative tool. It gets its credit across the entire county. Get the sharing and take.
And what's the cost of that?
That we budgeted sixty-five hundred for that.
Is there any room in that line?
Well, I guess the question is, um, no, we, we have maintenance agreements that are in place. For example, also another thing is like our, uh, our E-ticket. Our E-ticket goes through there. That's a reoccurring cost. We have our body warrant camera systems through that. That's for all of our evidence upload. We have cloud storage. Body warrant camera, we have, uh, the maintenance agreement. So if any, you know, anything breaks, we could send them back.
Yeah. There's nothing you could do about that, that cost. Like that's, that cost.
A lot of the vendors and as we add stuff on, so for now, what I'll give you an example. So as we look to doing a, um, next gen nine-one-one system. That's something we could say, okay, as part of that capital project, let's look to do five-year service. In that capital project upgrade. So then when we would go to next year, we could say, okay, well, for our nine-one-one vendor, now we can look to decrease because we incorporated that into a capital project.
So, so you're, let me just make sure I understand.
I, I understand the council president's question. You're looking at, again, we're looking at, uh, the two thousand and one year-to-date as opposed to two thousand, two thousand and twenty-one budget.
Right.
To the, I get exactly because when you said seventeen thousand, I just stared at my paper and thought I made a mistake. That whole thing, the, the sixty-seven, so you're going from fifty-six to sixty-seven. There were some things that we didn't have to use or they came late in the year. So we budgeted in, if we don't buy it halfway through the year, or we don't start getting into that service contract, um, like the chief just said, cybersecurity. That was huge for us. There were some things that came in with our plans that we didn't know, like if we purchase something. The terror bike stations or, you know, uh, buffaloes were. I'll slow it down just a second. Where we're doing external hard drives and we're trying, when we're buying all this stuff, we have to buy a maintenance plan with it. If we don't buy a maintenance plan with that, then what, what is happening is the brakes that we're paying through, through the teeth. If it doesn't break, they're winning. It's almost like when you snowplow by the, by the snowstorm instead of by the hour, right? If it's by the snowstorm and you don't get any snow, the guy won't. If you got a lot of snow, then you lose exactly, exactly where to. So some of the stuff that we didn't have to go ahead and we didn't have to purchase right away. We purchased halfway through the year because as you can see, we budget stuff and then it takes a little while for the budget to pass. So we can't really move on things. That's where the realization and it comes down to that. It's so low in that fifty-sixth or from fifty-six to sixty-seven. If you look the year before, it was a two thousand dollar, um, that's, was a two thousand dollar gap. So again, there, there's other mitigating factors when you, when you try to go from what we spend and then what we have, have left over. And then most of them are pretty easily explainable. And that's one of the huge things is that even this year, we're going to get our budget. June, maybe if everything goes good.
Nice before.
That would be nice. And now we're six, so we're holding back. We have, we're planning on doing.
No.
We can't do anything yet. So once we start buying, now you're going to see a realization of, of what's just called a savings for the first six months of the year, because we aren't allowed to buy anything. And we had to be ultra-conservative, you know? In a perfect world, it'd be great if we had a budget on the first, first of the year. It just doesn't happen.
I understand.
And that's a lot of the things that come in and you're going to see.
That's why I go year-to-date.
What's that?
That's why I use year-to-date.
Right. Because that was, that was the end of the year and there, there's some reason to, if we buy something in, last year was April, we had a four-month savings. Well, I'm, I'm preparing this budget in October the year before. I'm not seeing that savings. You know, I hope I'm, I'm being clear right there. And that you're going to see that, especially when we talk about salaries and wages and, and you have questions about.
And that you're going to see that especially when we talk about salaries and wages and and you have questions about that. Where that's the same same thing. There's so many mitigating factors that don't bring you to that. Exact number. Danelle and her office go crazy because they like to see zeros and I deal with them all the time. It has to be zero. I don't I don't get it, but you know, it's and she has to explain to me sometimes also, but I hope I understood. I explained that well.
I guess I would just, you know, we've asked every department. I guess I I would just ask if you, you know, take a second look if there's any room in any of those lines. I think it's fair to ask, obviously, safety is important. And I understand a lot of the programs that you described. I mean, technology is not. Cheap. And I, you know, I think policing relies on technology more and more and more. Cameras are. A great tool. That would be great if we had them, you know, in our in our town. But but again, to be fair, like I said, we've we've talked to. Every department and if. There's a line you can look at. Fair to ask.
You go to your dispatch. There's a substantial. Increase over your. LY to your your. Your year to date, your twenty one year to date to. Let's budget it. Almost forty thousand dollars.
Are your are your date from? And let's let's just break it down even slower. We're talking about salaries or wages, correct?
Yeah, salaries and wages, regular regular salaries, three thirty nine, two oh nine. Versus your projected four eleven, five seventy three.
Right. So we did have a dispatcher that. Had a major medical event last year that he ended out.
Okay.
And he used. He exhausted all of his time and he ended up on disability.
All right.
So some of that, some of those. Some of his pay was just. He didn't get his pay, but as you could see. Overtime went over a little bit. We recovered for a dispatcher that was out on medical injury.
Right. It was disability.
That's where you realize the saving because the 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 pay was coming through disability instead of.
I'm I'm sure I'm sure. Yeah, he was out for, I mean, I forget how many, how long.
But still, the budget is.
It was still budgeting.
The budget is still twenty twenty eight or thirty nine thousand more.
UAW employees too.
And yeah, they are UAW employees.
That that increases is all.
That's your last year.
Percent increase. You said it was denial, two percent, two percent.
Increase in steps. Yeah.
So that's that is completely steps and and two percent increase because that's.
So when we break down our regular salaries, we go to each specific employee that's that's on the books and we. Align it with their exact salary scale, what they're exactly supposed to be. Now, of course, there are some fluctuations that you can't account for. I said, like, yeah, you know, with dispatcher, they get that gets ill and is out on disability. The UAW did have their their. Their contract and I. We had a dispatcher. Is that the year that the dispatcher retired and then the next one started? So in the beginning of twenty twenty one.
Didn't you have wasn't there like an additional? I actually, I don't remember this. Didn't you have an additional dispatcher? Because what we're doing.
We were doing, we were doing five full timers. And then it went to the sixth one because of the issue with.
Yes. No, I think that was twenty twenty.
That was a transition in between.
Yeah.
I can get you a better response for that.
Okay.
We'll we'll take a look at that.
And then the holiday pay, I guess that's.
All holiday pay is contractual. What the employees downstairs in the UAW. They get they get the holidays. Obviously, we're open twenty four seven, three sixty five. So they get what's called floating holidays. So they can take.
They can take off.
So we have to forecast and if you could see that we have we forecast again for the worst. So we take their take their day because they can. Go ahead and say, I want them all. Well, now they're they've they're taking them for time off instead. Which completely due to some overtime on the other end of it. But your question to answer your question, that's how much they put in for to be paid for. We have to forecast that they're going to put in for everything.
So seventeen thousand is if everybody says, just give me my pay. I'm not going to take the day. Gotcha.
That's really dependent on the. See in twenty twenty, a lot more people opted to get. As opposed to what happened in.
Want to stay home.
And that would be the same case. The good news is that we we asked for no increase on. Uniform lounge, same thing. We added a full time employee last year.
Last year.
And we had we had them in. So we have to go ahead and go through and it's again, we do the worst case scenario. The way the way it's broken down, if they were, everybody puts in all their receipts. Then they're gonna we're gonna exhaust that. But that's not very very.
Dispatch a different department, then police department, or you just have different line items?
They're broken down. Into their own subsection.
When you look at the budget document, it's a separate department in the budget, right?
Other questions on dispatch and. I'm moving to animal control.
I'm gonna correct myself again. I made another mistake. So under materials and supplies, that should not be negative twenty seven cents. It's actually the fifty three hundred that's in advertising and advertising is zero.
I was wondering what was going on there. I had a highlight for now.
I was.
The posting error.
I can't unhighlight. I've I lost them on my phone. Pink. It's gonna save.
You're gonna you're gonna see, it's gonna be the same question with the the two thousand twenty one budget and our proposed budget. Is contractual. Let's go back to the I see the trend of where we're going. We have, we have a room room for, we have not added, we've added the towns, but we have not added anybody, any employees in. The problem is just trying to get people to work. So we have room for a part time employee and a kennel attendant. We don't offer a very fair reach. So we that's why we've been trying to work on the salary scales. You can go work at. Make dollar up the street at Dunkin Donuts, make twenty dollars an hour. You come down here and you're cleaning up cat. Stuff for fourteen. People aren't gonna do that. And then try to get a viable play. If you're looking for something, Brian, we could.
Yeah, I know. I was thinking.
Have an application for that?
We have, we have a great part time employee. But that that person also goes to school. So we use her more during the summer summer months and they just pick up the slack on the other end of it. She actually went and she's certified by ACL at this point. So that's where you're gonna see some of that.
Is there an opportunity to 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 not employ but to have interns come down?
We could.
You don't want to get.
A whole volunteer thing, but then you have a liability with. You have to you have to pick and choose and. We do have people come in. We do have services come in. We have the high school sends down. Certain people down to us, some special needs individuals, and they run them through sort of like a life sort of deal. And we also do every once in a while, we'll we'll do community service stuff.
That's what I was just gonna ask that because I. I'm the community service organizer up in the Highland Lakes Fire Department and. We haven't had anybody in a while with the with everything that's going on, but. I did. I didn't know. Listen. I I'm not looking as far as the saving the money as much as as I am looking to make sure that these animals are taken care of correctly. But I don't want to have to. Have somebody come in that you have to train and then. You know, you just. Prolong everything at that point, you know, like and and when you have people and you hire them, they usually come from a different municipality that. Actually have done this work before and I. I have to tell you that. Animal control is has gone leaps and bounds. I think that whoever is the supervisor in charge is doing his job. Okay. Even even during catch season, snow season, whatever season it is, you guys are doing your job. So. And that goes with your police work as well. I talk to you often. And. I I always hear positive out of you and I and I like that attitude. And it's it's important today. Because after everything that we've went through for the last two years. The last thing you need are the the heroes that you look up to, not having a great opinion. And you guys do have a good opinion of a lot of things. So it's really good. As as everybody else does that works for the town because I'm noticing that. The only other question I have. I'm sorry, go ahead. The just as a point of information, you have a negative figure on your year to date. On materials and supplies. I'm sorry, I missed. I must have missed it.
Okay, um, the so materials and spies should actually be the one underneath it. It should be fifty three eighty five seventy seven. And advertising was zero.
I'm sorry.
I apologize for that.
And when you start looking to these line items, there there's significant increases on these and this is solely due to the shared service agreements that we have. We have the the animal control function as a large of getting donations in. They go directly back. If you walk a sergeant, one of our sergeants is over there. And you know, that's in charge over there. That's who implemented T and R program. If you walk in there, he's gonna alter you. You're there. You're gonna get spay or neutered if you walk out. Adopt any animals out that aren't spared. And we we started that program when we started, when we took over. It is a huge expense. This, the what we're asking for in a budget is nothing compared with what we spend because we do, we have such an outpouring in the community in the way of donations, whether it be food. I do feel that since we took over the animal control function. We've made it into their rounds. Animals over there. Everybody should want to go there instead of being to dread going there. Yes, we have to take your license money. Yes, if your dog's running a large, it might get a fine. But at the end of the day, it's all about the animals. And, you know, we adopted certain things where we are spay and neuter is huge. And in the past, we were going ahead and we were we were adopting animals out that weren't spay or neuter. That's just irresponsible, our our part, I believe. And, you know, this is that's what animals do, right? So when we started doing that, we started seeing an uptick in our donations. And the donations through the when we get them, they solely go back. To the animal. So it's sort of like a spay it forward sort of thing.
Nice. Nice. That was pretty good.
A long time.
So that's why you're gonna see some of the increase, but even the increase that we asked for, I think we probably spent about the animal control function ended up sending about. Twenty five thousand dollars on spay neuter last year and a lot of that is done through community donations. And from buying low cash, low cost spay neuter, not low class. They do a fine job. So that's why you're gonna see a lot of the lot of the increases there. It's a direct reflection on those four shared services. Comparison to what we what we're receiving from those townships.
Going to your Office of Emergency Management, I only have one question. You've a seventy percent increase in your salary and wages. Is there a particular reason why? You jumped from seventy five hundred to twelve thousand five hundred.
The twenty twenty one year to date should be actually ten thousand dollars because the deputy OEM is twenty five hundred and. And the. The actual OEM is seventy five hundred.
Okay.
So I that should be updated. It must have updated after that.
All right.
There is an increase to twenty five hundred. We have a unique opportunity. I'm not the actual OEM coordinator. I'm one of the deputies. There's two deputies. They're adding a third deputy on this year. The reason is because we have an opportunity in Vernon Township, which is really unbelievable. I wish the OEM coordinator was here to speak for himself. There is a. Retired police officer that lives in Vernon Township, who was the one of the major OEM coordinators. He was a trainer on the whole eastern coast. It's unbelievable. This guy's knowledge base of FEMA and inner workings of OEM are really priceless. So to bring him in to be able to work towards grants, to work towards completing FEMA paperwork for storms, you name it. This guy is the guru. So I know that was the vision from the OEM coordinator. There's going to be a slight expense to bring him on as a deputy OEM. Coordinator, but he's also going to be in a position to be doing. A significant amount of the work and labor.
Yeah.
That can more than pay for that.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Thank you, Gene.
Can I go back to just one second? Can I go back to that dispatch line item about recently designed college? As I was searching for it as the captain was talking. One of the the specific increase. Might have in my notes. One of the full time dispatcher that was added. In early of last year in twenty twenty one. So we went from our five timers, six full timers. There used to be seven full time dispatchers and they slowly went down and we went to six full timers and to five full timers and started to any part time dispatchers. But like much you see everywhere else. We were paying such a low salary for part time dispatchers, we couldn't get them. So they did add one full time dispatcher early in last year. So I see that in there. So that's being accounted for in this year. There's significant. I just didn't want to let that go unanswered. I saw it here, so I wanted to make sure.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you leave. You know. You're the law, one of the largest, not the largest department in. In 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 the budget. Do you think we can? Look to you for a further reduction, say in the area of. Give me a number.
So I guess my question would be to you this would be this to you. We have an officer retiring in October.
All right.
So it would take six months to train a new police officer. To get him onto the road, then he does an additional three months once he's on the road. So when you send somebody to the police academy. You're looking at a nine month process from when they start to when they're actually hitting boots on the ground, being a part of our manpower. So we have an officer that's retiring October first. So in the budget is the remainder of his salary. From October to December. If you tell me, chief, don't hire a police officer this year and we postpone it to the spring, then there would be a realizes. Slight cost savings in that line item of salary. If you decide that, you know, we wanted to get forward and get, you know, because obviously that'll affect that'll affect.
Overtime.
Expenses down there. That if everything just. Everything else will come up in certain areas if we decided to delay, which I'm saying, we could do that if that's something you decided you wanted to do.
Well, I think what we have to look at is, you know. Looking at a community that has been hit hard. I mean, we. People have to understand that one of the. The largest growing. And maturing, I would say. Demographics in the community. Senior citizens. And it's tough. You know, I I passed by and I see what's happening in the senior citizen center or used to. I mean, now that, you know. I don't know even know if they're. Back in action yet previously, you know. They're always pretty active. You know, I I think we need to do as much as possible to to help them. And I'm going to ask you. You know. Because that's exactly what I was gonna say, you know, do you need to replace that particular? Patrolman or that officer. Is it something that you could hold off? Could you defer? As one of ours, one of our citizens said earlier this this evening, can we defer it for a little bit while longer?
You know, my answer is when when we start taking away from the main. We reduce our numbers there, that means some other task. Gets eliminated and we move that stuff. That person would then be sent back to another patrol division. So we've already reduced our numbers in our detective bureau. We went from four officers down to three. In our detective bureau and we were forced to do that because COVID hit. When we had a long time situation where now we have officer, one was injured. One's out on long term COVID leave and all of a sudden, we're trying to just function with where we're at. And we were still hitting overtime expenses because COVID was hitting. So places to draw from to augment that officer or not replace him. That just means something else suffers really is what it means.
And it might cause more overtime.
Well, I think it isn't. I think there's circumstances where maybe that's already the case.
It's happening right now.
So we're not going to see a difference because that's already the.
When do your.
So it won't be different.
When do your classes start?
I'm sorry. My point is that it won't be different because I think that's already happening.
It's happening as we speak.
Exactly. So you're not. So I I'm not gonna. Put that for this. So what you're saying is not really the case if you don't rehire because we're already absorbing that overtime.
We're doing that as we.
Exactly. Right? You know what I mean, right?
We've already. Other area to make up for this officer.
It's already happened. That's.
And you can realize the savings. You might realize the savings this year, but you also have when you hire an officer, they come in and you get them.
I get it. They're in a lower.
They're at the the top step or at the bottom.
Right. Next year's budget, you're gonna see an officer that retired on the top step. And you're gonna see an entry level at the bottom step. Unfortunately, that didn't happen to work out.
Until next year, it does size a little.
You know, that's my my point is. What I was going to ask before, you know. Vice President rudely interrupted. When do the classes start for for at the academy? Are they ongoing or?
They're not ongoing. It depends on what academy you go to. So we typically go to Morris County, which is January and July.
Okay, so.
What they are.
So if we held off on. Working with an officer for at least a new one for at least a month. Month and a half. You'd be saving how much for you, you know?
Well, if you look at the difference of our officer who's retiring October first through the end of December, and you look at what it would cost to hire a new officer and put him in the academy in July. They pretty much offset them. Right? So you're looking at. Virtually, it's all going to be about the same. We decided to do that. If you said, chief, hold off till next year to replace that officer. And keep working with what you're the staffing that you're working with. Well, there may be some incurred overtime expenses because of that. Well, there may be some incurred overtime expenses because of that, uh, which, like you said, is, is
Is already happening.
That's happening right now.
Right.
Um, and all it means is also means that we can't get those boots on the ground probably till around September of next year. And we have other retirements that are slated that potentially could happen next year. So we're gonna have, we're hitting this point in time in our career where officers are gonna be retiring. There's gonna be change. We go through a couple of years where there's not as many, and then you hit a bunch of years in a row where there's a bunch of guys. You know? Which, when those things happen, I will say, it's, it's definitely reflective of our budget because you'll see
And it changes, yeah.
That retires and then, you know, I have and you see some significant cost savings and you'll see, over the course of the next several years, those things will be happening.
You could take that job at the animal control and it's Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for everything you do. Thank you.
Thanks.
We have next on the
Um, we have volunteer emergency services and fire prevention. Lou is on, and we have Tom.
Oh, can you hear me?
We can, we can hear you, Lou.
Uh, can you hold me to the end, please?
We'll loop to the end.
Who wants to go at the end?
The end. Go after.
Yeah, he'll go after.
After. Um, I'm gonna just run through um
Yeah.
Most of the volunteer emergency services and then we can go into Lou and we can talk about the capital projects first. Um, so the, for fire departments and ambulance, those amounts, those are reimbursed amounts um, that those departments send to us monthly, we reimburse them up to those dollar amounts. So it's staying at the forty-five thousand for the uh, fire departments and thirty-five thousand for the ambulance departments. Um, equipment repair and maintenance, um, that's staying at thirty thousand. State fire mandate, that's also staying at thirty thousand. And the clothing allowance is also staying at thirty thousand. And uh, just to be clear, that twenty-two thousand dollars that was spent on their clothing allowance, that has increased. So we budget for the total amount that could be paid out. Um, but I'm pretty strict about paying those out. So people are required to give us, you know, W four and their information so we can pay them because that's to be run through payroll. So the remaining amount that's left over or amounts, people haven't been paid yet because they didn't give us.
When that ordinance first was developed, there was no uh, input that there was going to be taxes taken from that, from that money. And we were always under the impression that the money would, uh, if, if taxes were to be taken is when you turned in a receipt.
It's actually the reverse.
It's
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So um, so when I started two thousand eight, yeah, two thousand eight, um, it was still up to three hundred and sixty dollars was non-taxable from the IRS. And then it's still taxable state though, so I don't know when that happens prior to then. Um, and then the following year, they did it, I think for like two or three years, they still made it. And then they never renewed that law. Um, the feds didn't. So then everything after that, at that point, let's say twenty-ten forward, everything is taxable. It's unfortunate.
That is unfortunate.
Thank you.
Uh, so the forty-five thousand, is that like a statutory? Is that, that's just the number that you've agreed upon with the volunteer services? So if they don't, if they don't, um, you know, like Pochuk, they, they use thirty thousand dollars. You reimburse them and they were
I would say at this point
Thirty-five.
Use the forty-five.
Obviously the forty-five, okay. So how about Pochuk Fire? They had twenty-nine thousand, but you budgeted forty-five. Where, what happens if, with that money that you've set aside to pay that? Where does that go?
Um, so it'll still stay and uh, to be clear, I would assume, I need to get the number for you, but I would say that's closer to forty-five at this point.
It's closer to forty-five, okay.
So they are required to submit monthly, but we kind of hold off.
That you don't hold off for the end, okay. And that's fine. So I mean, if there's a thousand left that they don't, you know, that doesn't get submitted. And so where do you put that towards next year's budget towards?
No, so, so it doesn't work like that. So um, with the municipal budget, any mon, any funds that are not used, um, are held off until, you know, the following year, in case anything trickles in, like the clothing allowance
Yeah.
Additional people. And at the close of that year, so at the close of twenty-twenty-two, any monies that are not used from twenty-twenty-one's budget will roll over into our fund balance.
Okay.
Or we can use some, what we've done historically in the past, if we have taken uh, good chunks of that money and put into our storm reserve, which is really important um, for storm removal to cover any um, unforeseen costs. That's actually helped up, helped us with COVID in twenty-twenty, um, because when COVID hit and we had all these extra expenses, um, the state turned around and said, okay, you can actually use your storm trust to offset those costs and pay for things. We were able to put in the filtration system in the building, we were able to buy, um, buy laptops for uh, department heads so that they could work from home. Um, so it is important that we have that storm reserve recovery. We also put money into um, our reserve for compensate for accumulated absences. So every year, yes, when you look in the audit and you look at who, who, how much time have people accrued? How much have we put away to save for that, for when they, you know, retire and we have payouts? Um, that's been significantly underfunded during the year, through the years. Um, this year, we put a good chunk into that uh, to make sure that we are better funded in those areas.
Twenty-twenty, you put that in there?
In twenty-twenty-one, at the end of twenty-twenty-one.
At the end of twenty-twenty-one, you put so, some went to storm reserves?
Storm reserve and accumulated absences.
Okay, and then
And I would probably ask, I'll probably ask for that again this year.
And this, and the rest goes to fund balance then?
Yes.
Are those the only three places you can put it?
You could set up reserves for things.
Okay, so you can set, so you're allowed to set up reserves for other, but those are the three that you, that Vernon puts in.
Yes.
Can the fire department tell us if there's gonna be any large ticket items that are gonna become due to us that we're gonna have to take a look at? Because uh, this is the time.
Well, you can see on here with our, the Pochuk's got in for an engine, that's a pretty big one. I think um
This is on the capital, if you guys wanna turn to the very last one, um, twenty-four.
And they're all coming due, but the next couple of years, there's a few more pieces that we're
Um, I did meet with the fire departments in nineteen, I think twenty nineteen. Um, I met with all the chiefs of the fire departments to go over um, the list of all of their engines, their pumpers, all that. Um, when we purchased them, which they were like all purchased at the same time. And then what their average useful life was when they felt they were coming due.
It's amazing how much money you could save by them all at once.
Problem is them replacing them all at once.
That's your problem now, now.
Um, so what, what I did to work with them is, you know, we kind of talked it out on when things should be replaced, um, how many need to be done. You know, this is a large ticket item, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what we budgeted for it. Um, so to do like three of those in years is a lot. Um, so we agreed on one item a year, um, as well as putting some money aside for those larger ticket items. So when you look at the capital plan, you'll see something that says, obviously, the many pumpers in there for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Then you'll also see a reserve for fire capital for a hundred and ten thousand dollars. That reserve is money that's put aside into a capital reserve that sits there for capital purchases. So for fire department, right?
Can't be used for anything else.
You can't use, I mean, yes, in theory, you cannot use it for anything else. But I will say, if council in the future decides that they do not want that fire reserve, they have the ability to cancel that. So there's all, I don't wanna say, oh, yeah, you can
That would have the resolution.
Yes, you would have to
We're also working on some turnout. Get that number down.
Can I gear? Do I still have your commissioner and everything too?
Yeah, he, he was holding the work tonight.
Okay. How about the deputy?
Deputy is at the four company drill that we got going on.
You got the short straw.
I don't wanna say that.
Um, the bailout horses too, this would be round one of two. So there'd be the other half next year.
Are, are any of the government, uh, federal grants to fire available for somebody's fire trucks? Um, I know that Patterson and a lot of other departments, I know Hudson County, I even think got one through the, the fire grant back when George Bush Junior was the, the president. It was four billion dollars available. One, some of that money already came to Vernon Township with the air packs that we, uh, we had back in two thousand and one. And then uh
Yeah, after the, the radios and air packs, we haven't had much luck with grants. Trying to get them.
Yeah, that's, you, you hear such success in some towns with grants from the federal government for this stuff and I mean, and, and unfortunately, when they use these grants, I was on the peer review committee for them. And what happens is, is they'll say, okay, there's five towns that are put in for a fire truck. They'll go to the town that doesn't have a fire truck. And, and people laugh, there are towns in this country that don't have a fire truck, which they use a pickup truck with a tank on the back and a pump. So those guys are getting the, uh, those towns are getting the grants. So if there is an opportunity for Vernon Township to take advantage of any of these grants, if please, uh, I, I know that it was a ten percent matching funds for us with the air packs. So we, the town had to come up with like thirty-four thousand dollars. But when you're getting three hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of equipment paid for, it's a good ratio.
I think it would be, I think it'd be a good idea if the township could get a grant writer.
I couldn't agree with you more.
And
It's not necessarily about that because when you meet with the people who are in the decision-making capability and what your, what the area is, and as the councilman pointed out, uh, sometimes it's the fact of who doesn't have anything or who has the oldest vehicles and everything. So while you definitely could use one because we're getting one nearly every year, um, and a grant would be great. We don't necessarily look as good when you go over all the criteria uh, that they, you know, they're looking for, preview the
That might, I think that might be, that's, that's true in some cases, but you know, we did, you know, there's, doesn't stop us from getting a grant writer. And I think it's
Chief, we've applied every
About the time we
Yeah, right.
To hire a grant writer.
Yeah, I believe we have, yeah.
I mean, we, we need to find a, a grant writer that finds, finds this money.
Yeah, but you, like I'm saying, these are formula type grants. When you have a formula, you can write the greatest narrative in the world, it doesn't make any difference. You can't change what they're looking for. If, and if we don't match up with their criteria, it's not gonna do you any good.
You need the buzzwords, you need to have the
I, I understand that, there's, but there's, there's money out there.
That's right, there is money out there.
Money, there's a lot of money out there, uh, whether it's COVID money, infrastructure money, wherever we get it, wherever we can find it.
A lot of grant writers are paid by the amount of money that they make on the, on the grant uh, receipt too. I, I understand what Chuck is saying. Because I was there, I was in the process of writing a grant and I know what it takes. But there are people that this is what they do and I, I, I don't know if we could take advantage of any of that. But uh, I have no questions.
Okay, we can um, then move into fire prevention.
There we go. Lou, are you?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Glad to keep you so long.
Lou, are you available now? There you go.
I'm here.
How you doing, Lou?
Okay, how's everybody?
Okay.
Okay, so as far as fire prevention goes for twenty-twenty-one, uh, what we had to do since COVID hit in twenty-twenty, we didn't do any business inspections for the year. So in twenty-twenty-one, we had to double our inspections to cover twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one. So my department wound up doing uh, over fourteen-hundred to sixteen-hundred inspections. Uh, that's with two part-timers. Uh, besides that, we took on the short-term rental inspection process. And uh, unlike other municipalities, we still did in-person inspections with certificate of occupancy inspections and with uh, STR inspections. As far as my budget goes, uh, I really didn't increase anything, as you can see. I tried to keep it the same way. Uh, the materials and supplies, the seventy-five hundred, all right? Last year, we didn't do anything with that. That's all the printed material for the school program in October, uh, for all the children. Other than that, we're pretty much, they're keeping it the same.
Okay, thank you. I don't, I don't think I have any other questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Lou.
You're welcome.
Jordan sweet. I know, we, Lisa's uh, got her phone up and running.
Okay. Yeah, we can go back to um, collection. Eleven.
Lisa?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yay, we can.
I'm so sorry about all that, I have no idea what happened.
That's okay.
But anyway, all right, so I'm just gonna jump right in. I'm gonna go down my line items. Uh, my office supplies were decreased by a thousand dollars. My education and conferences were decreased down to twenty-five hundred. And part of that reason is because Nicole took the certification courses for uh, the collector classes. And I'm very proud to say that she is now certified. Um, and it's, it's also recommended by the DCA and bond rating agencies. They encourage to have backup in your office. And I'll use myself as an example, I was out for almost five and a half months last year due to an injury. And probably close to two of those months, I was pretty incapacitated. I was really um, unable to do anything. So having a certi, certified person in my office would have made things a lot easier. Um, the collection of taxes and materials stayed the same. The advertising stayed the same. Computer went up five hundred dollars because that's the software that's admins that we use. Recording of the tax sale certificates at the municipal level went down to five hundred. And my membership dues stayed just about the same. And I did put together a little bit of a synopsis of kind of what we do every day. Because there is a little misconception out there about how the tax collector's office only takes in taxes four times a year and that's all we do. So I just wanna add that we do collect daily deposits from all of the departments for the finance office. We balance entries for tax payments, MUA payments, special assessments and online payments. We intake all of those payments. We process redemption, or I should say, I process redemption of outside liens and municipal liens. And issue checks to the lien holders, cancel the tax sale certificates at the county level. The phone volume is just incredible. We refund overpayments, I process appeal credits and refunds. We do all the billing for taxes, added, omitted and special assessments. Quarterly delinquent notices. So when you send out the delinquent notices, it's kind of like you're taking on another tax period because there's a whole nother influx of people coming in. Our yearly tax sale, we prepare for that all year long. Um, I have to do a quarterly census for collections. I prepare monthly reports to finance and to the mayor and council. Reports have to be done at the state and county level regarding senior citizen and veteran deductions. There's daily adjustments as needed for MUA intact. We apply the deductions. I have to attend CEU classes to retain my certification. We assist the public with the tax freeze applications. And right now, it's a super heavy time for that. If we're getting ten a day, it's a lot because we have to certify it and then they have questions on their applications that they send into the state. Resolutions are prepared for the council and uh, for tax-related issues. We do bank code changes, address changes and process return checks, uh, which is a daily occurrence. And at the quarter, we are currently taking in about fourteen million a quarter.
Sounds like you're very busy.
Thank you.
We are super, we're super swamped.
Sounds very busy.
Thank you, Lisa.
I do have a quick question for, for advertising. You said you kept it the same, but for twenty-twenty-one, you only spent a hundred five dollars? Is there a bill coming in?
The bill came in in January for our tax.
Yeah, that's why.
Okay, that's why, okay. Yeah, and that's what I figured, I just wanted to make sure.
And um, and to let you know too, the computer services line, um, there's about twenty-eight hundred that it was just charged to the materials and supplies line instead of computer services, but that's our admin software.
Okay.
And the fourteen thousand dollar increase in salary and wages is
So um, so the, we have a shared service agreement with the MUA. So the MUA shared service agreement was renegotiated in twenty-twenty. I was like, what year was that? Sorry, COVID is a blur. Um, so it was renegotiating in twenty-twenty, so that, those amounts are split between the finance department, the tax department and administration for salaries and wages. For salaries and wages and those cover specific things that they do. So for this, um, and looking at the shared service agreement, we expanded that last year to incorporate administrative services. And looking at the actual breakdown of where the time is spent. Uh, it was just a slight reduction on the tax side, and again, there are two union employees, so.
What's the total amount, is that's.
Total amount of the shared service agreement? I'm sorry, I don't remember.
Is it eighty two or sixty two?
Eighty.
So there's a receivable for the offset.
Correct.
Yes.
Is it eighty two or sixty two?
Eighty five.
What was the shared service agreement before I tell you that, I, I wanna, I wanna tout this, that's, that's. The reason why.
So the shared service agreement was for finance administrative services. So the MUA is a outside entity, I always explain it as it's basically the same thing as having another township, right? So every township, just like the authority, needs to have its own CFO. Um, certified municipal finance officer. So the, when the MUA was created, the township agreed to have their chief financial officer act as the chief financial officer. Also for the MUA, um. Everything that is incorporated with that, so, um, posting of revenues. Which is what's handled, handled, uh, in the tax office, so anyone that comes with a bill, every time the bill is paid, they have to post it to our ledger. Um, we have to do all of our bank statements, we have to do everything financial that's associated. Um, with the financial administration of the authority, uh, in the same fashion that it would be if it was a utility. Um. We also incorporate purchasing, which is handled in my department, uh, instead of hiring an employee. Um, that's handled in finance as well. I mean, that's kind of like the watered down version of it.
Yeah, and you save, and you save an substantial amount of money by doing it that way.
Yeah, you definitely save a substantial, because the amount of money you have to pay, um, in additional fees for employees, yes.
Doesn't it become confusing, say, at your level? Right now, you're, you're, you're working as CFO for the township and also as director for the MUA.
No, no.
You're not.
Yes, I'm working as that, but here, I'm here as the chief financial officer for the township.
Right. And.
But there is a shared service for the chief financial officer for the MUA.
Right, exactly. So. Handling your time is, is divided up, how do you manage that?
Um.
What's your determination?
So, I, okay.
Carefully.
I don't want to be disrespectful, but, um, to discuss like my employment, I don't, I don't feel comfortable doing that in the public, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't even think it's appropriate either.
I just don't want to get anybody in trouble, that's all.
Thank you, okay. Thanks, Lou.
And Lisa.
And Lisa, I'm sorry. Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you, have a great night.
Thank you. Who we have next, Donell?
Um, we have DPW, thank you.
My favorite people in the whole world.
Oh, boy.
Especially during the winter.
Yeah, that's exactly right. Look how tired they are, they've been working.
They start earlier than the rest of us.
Yeah, they should have them go first.
We should have had you guys go first.
You should have.
Make it a point to do that next time around.
Sounds like a plan.
Make it a promise.
All right, um, as you can see, the budget presentation that, uh. Uh, we'll take a look at it. Twenty one, two thousand twenty one projects, uh, we do drainage project on bear and, uh, paving. Whether being three hundred feet, uh, one of the projects that we then nailed it, uh, by the farmhouse itself. That just had to be done because of like constant ice spot all year long, right, you're, you're, you're up there, you know what?
Absolutely, I know exactly what you're saying.
Uh, the first stage construction for the pump park. Uh, which, uh, won the state and the town a little bit of money, which is fantastic, anytime we can, we have no problem with that. First stage hiking path construction for the police station, that, that originally, uh, the lot of prep oil and stone. I have a list that I'm trying to put together now, uh, once I get a hold of more asphalt. Uh, the roads that we aren't paving, I'm just trying to get, but any roads that can get them sealed. Uh, it's a, it'll be a little bit of a project.
It's an oil and stone?
There's so many roads that need attention right now, it's something that, uh. The worst, we'll get, pick the worst ones and scope from there and see, you know, obviously you gotta call what's gonna cost, we go from that route.
Are we going with oil and stone with the ones that don't need it right away or?
Uh, the one, there's, there's quite a few out there that are really rough shape and, uh, we've already talked to Donello and Corey. Um, sorry about the names, but, uh, as far as our sidewalks being paved, we come up with a list of those to get started. Uh, way back when, uh, years and years ago, we tried to come up with a list for the sidewalks to get started and it never came to fruition.
Right.
When I came in, she knows one of my ideas, trying to get something started, and it just took so much time. Uh, we couldn't get going on it and. Some, the windlass stone process is supposed to design, design the last five years. If it's currently, it works fantastic, uh, one of the issues that we had with it, um, Brian, probably yourself. We went with quarter inch stone, this is, so we went back to three inch stone like we did in the old, olden days. Uh, and it seemed to be holding up a lot, a whole lot better, uh, perfect example, sleepy hollow, with the double shot in that road, that road is fantastic, yes. So we're trying to get back to some of that, some of the roads that we can save, that's what we're going with.
Because I know the roads up in the back of Lake Wanda and the ones that are up in the back of Barry Lakes, you know, Tangleway and that whole crowd. Holy, holy moly.
We have already, a couple of roads up there, it's gonna be done, they share a couple down near the valley.
Yeah.
But also, uh, got the first stage construction, fuel pumps going, the, the area over here, that started. Uh, DPW generator replacement, uh, that takes forever, uh, we got caught back in April, May. And we finally received the unit back in January, uh, and we're not, tomorrow will be finished. We, we put it in place, that we just have the plumber come in and hook up the gas.
How many KW is that?
Sixty.
Wow, really?
Well, the old we used to have was an eighty K of, that was, I think that was eighty eight, eighty nine, they want that, I do believe. Um, and.
Was that army surplus that, oh, no?
That was, uh, I think that was through a grant, I think.
Okay, yeah.
Unfortunately, uh, one of them being, mice got into it and it just. Right.
Yep.
So, uh, but it took, took forever to get it first, to get it, it's just supplying the man because the COVID and everything else. Uh, you know, it just wanted to be almost a year, you know, unfortunately, that's a sign of the times, we're a lot of stuff that we're looking at now. Uh, we had new garage stores for the DPW finally, uh, we paved, uh, Berth Road and half the glow of mountain road. Uh, we did a drainage project on our drive, which we have to postpone to this year. DPW storage, our skin, our pit, we started on that. Ed Gordon, the Bushwood Drive, uh, we have an ATV, ATV issue with the, that, uh, people are calling, constantly. ATVs are coming ripping down the road, uh, actually jumping off the end of the gold, the sack, so we had a gold, guard road down there. Uh, there's a drainage project that Karen Drive, we're gonna be taking care of.
Oh, good.
Once his weather finally breaks permanently, uh, we're gonna put in probably at least two pieces of plate under this person's driveway for now.
They took it out, didn't they?
Excuse me?
That was taken out, wasn't it?
Uh, no, we haven't taken it out yet.
Not from you, not, I, I, I know, okay, all right.
But eventually that whole road from the intersection that Karen, at least up, uh, probably a good three, four hundred feet is gonna be piped. Hopefully that'll leave a lot of that problem. Let's see here, uh, that's the projects, accomplishments. We've, uh, one of the first things that we, last year was we finished sweeping a lot of town roads by August. We get started in April, we started early, we had one sweeper. Uh, and once the weather started to break in, I got it out early, trying to get this stuff going, we had a lot of complaints all year long as chug in the merit, dust. Uh, it's, it's a slow process, everybody has to realize it's a real slow, because and everybody wants it done now. When they call, I need it down, kids are falling, and we get a complaint like that, if kids are falling, they get hurt, we jump to that. No matter where we're at, we're over here down, down in the valley and we get a, like, you know, a child is, a child is fell, riding his bike, he's all skinned up. All right, you know what, let's go take care of that complaint, it's a serious, the more serious complaint that, uh, we start up, we try to go to a section. At a section and then move on, but when we get a serious complaint, then we have to do it right away.
Before the change of government, we had to buy a sweeper, uh, in two thousand and nine. And, uh, it was a big deal back then because we had a sweeper and it was, it was. You could hear it rusting over here, it was bad. And, uh, right, right, and picking up. All the grit that is on the ground is, is like the biggest pain in the neck that, that this town has got to go through.
Between, between the sweepings on the road and the, and the pipes.
Right.
And, uh, this year, we started using toward the end, uh, instead of grit and salt mix. I was trying to use the more salt to help build roads faster and also have less material on the road. Some of it is not, not going to work, it's going to be pretty, pretty nice, you know, uh, but again, it's just, you're gonna have to phase in that whole lot, each, a whole lot. We're gonna have to phase in that one, because salt is going through the roof. Uh, right now, it's fifty seven, fifty seven dollars a ton, uh, the, it's expected to go up to seventy. You know, to the, to the horse kind of. That was one of the things I installed, yeah, so it's, it's on its way up.
Where are you getting it from?
We're getting it through the Sussex County co-op.
Okay.
Fifty seven dollars a ton, so.
Do you go, do you go to the piers and pick it up or?
No, we have it delivered.
Oh, really?
Deliver, yes, absolutely.
How many tons do we go through a year on average?
Uh, it depends on the, it depends on the winner, you know, I'd have to go back in the book. Uh, last year, we had a, uh, it was a sort of windfall where the company double shipped us. Uh, and we, we had the money to pay, to pay for the extra.
Okay.
And it worked out fantastic because our salt set was full, full, we had salt when nobody else had. So that's the kind of thing, you know, and solely paying fifty three dollars a ton, which, you know what, hey. Uh, I was smiling year to year, I'm not gonna lie to you, when we had it and everybody was, hey, you got this, you got, yeah, we got it, we're, you know. So, uh, it's just something to where I try to plan ahead. That, this, every storm, we, I gotta figure out, oh, how much we use. All right, so we got an open purchase order for salt company, I give you seventy five hundred ton, you know, this week. I just, I don't like to be caught, you know, in the rear.
Of course not, yeah.
Um, one thing we do get a new plotter for our sign department, now the sign department, uh, we updated that plotter. Uh, this prints out the sign material for any, any signs that we use, and, you know, along the road. We also have a shared services through Hamburg, uh, Pearl, they use us for all their signs. So whatever they need to sign, we'll get a hold of Scott, uh, and then whatever they need, he'll make it up and they, we get reimbursed for them. We also had a, a new job created, so this DPW garage was desperately needed. Uh, we had the new DPW wash water recycling system installed. Uh, we actually exposed of a ladder truck through this, this event that we ever sat on for a while. Um, we had two bulky waste days, uh, being short staff. Both waste days are all volunteer issue, volunteer status, uh, and we were. We had two gentlemen that had to bow out because of emergency service and emergency situations, uh, so I stepped in and helped the guys. Uh, Pete was there, uh, we don't only have anywhere between seven and nine guys, we had five that, those two days. So we were, we were really stepping in touch. Uh, we have installation of the new DPW lift inside the garage. Uh, we placed the garage doors of DPW. Um, we extended drainage system for forty three burst drive, uh, did a temporary major, temporary fix to a major drainage project. Uh, backside of canister which is on aqueduct that we still have to address again further. Uh, we did the combined space training program, uh, we, obviously, we, we did the eleven stumps of the missile building here. Been cleared, uh, we solved the historic marker at Haven Hill Farm. Now we did the, finished up the hurricane hide and cleanup.
I just want to stop you there for a second, did you? I don't know if anybody heard, but the federal government had sent New Jersey ten million dollars for, uh. Uh, to cover costs that hap, it just came on the news tonight. That, uh, um, there's, from the federal government, there's ten million dollars that's available for anything that, that needs to be taken care of. From Ida, for any of the municipalities. That were previously damaged by, and, and noted by the federal government that we were.
Did it for that.
Yeah, you did, okay, thank you.
Um, removed twenty dead trees behind the missile building and animal control that were, uh, an issue. Uh, we also removed, we have a, we had a calcium tank in the DPW for years, uh, it's plastic. Uh, was starting to deteriorate, uh, after multiple phone calls, uh, to different companies, it was gonna cost us quite a bit to get rid of it. I reached out to another DPW that uses calcium, uh, and they took whatever remaining we had, we had about four thousand gallons, maybe about thirty eight hundred total. Uh, and they took the rest of it, uh, and.
Is that the brine?
It's, no, no, this is calcium chloride, this is the brine cell.
Okay.
This is a calcium chloride, we used to have tanks in the back, right, front.
Yeah, yes.
Uh, and a tank of interval, I had to be at least twenty five years easily. Uh, and you couldn't touch, you couldn't touch some of the metal fittings. Uh, if you started, tried to turn the valve off, it would, would leak, so we had to make the move to get.
Like every other valve on some, with that stuff, yeah.
Uh, and luckily, they decided they took, they took the calcium chloride from us, uh, and we were able to get the tank cleaned up, cut it up, they give it for nothing. Um, let's see here, uh. We had a rather deep catch basin that, uh, Robbins Terrace, eighteen B, that we had to have a contractor come and take care of, of course. Uh, we just couldn't handle that kind of a job, uh, multiple guard row repairs. Uh, we replaced the guards doors that made the bridge park that were damaged. Um, we also finished updating the Maple Ridge Park lakes, the parkland, the pavilion. Um, we also took, helped out with the Lake Wanda Bridge dam repair, uh, that was, but yeah, that was, that was something else.
And all of the swings and the, the creeks that are going all the way out the way, way on the road, oh, up to the top, right?
Absolutely, um, we had the installation of the monument generator for the police station. Um, we also helped out thanks to, uh. Um, Michelle, we did the installation of the township mission board, she got it, uh, which is a real, real nice addition for the township, for sure. Um, uh, the only thing that I'm looking for down road is obviously, uh, manpower, you know. But now, when I first started, we had three crews of seven plus three guys on parts, we got two crews of seven, three guys on parts. And we're doing the best we can getting stuff on, uh, and when I say, I'm not gonna win, my guys are doing great. Uh, they're doing as much as they can with what we got, uh, we're shorthanded as it is. Uh, there's a couple of things I like to do more, uh, we used to do like straightening shoulders and some other things. Uh, just when some springtime comes, I'm gonna have either two to three mowers out, plus the sweepers, that's four guys, or the, the top. That probably will not be seen all spring, all summer, so that leaves even more behind the eight ball. Uh, but that's something that we can discuss down the road. Uh, second biggest thing that are really down the road that we're trying to finally figure out is paving some of these secondary roads that need it. Uh, some of these roads, there's no base, nothing left, I mean, they're polarized. Uh, and again, is this something to where, uh, they should have tried to get something started years ago, you know, maybe like a, uh, one or two roads here, one or two roads there. And that's what we're trying to do now, we're trying to get that started.
This is a. Template of a road plan, you've probably seen it.
Right.
This was developed back when our first term, um. It's, it's probably out of date in terms of pricing and everything, but. The fact that every street within the community is listed and whether their primary. Secondary or tertiary is listed. And a schedule was developed so that over a period of. Arbitrarily, let's just say, eh, eight years, you're going to see almost every road touched.
Right.
Now, you know, I've lived on my street for forty five years. And I think it's been oiled and stoned once. Maybe I'm wrong, but it could be, but right now, it's got more cracks in it than an alligator's back, you know, so. And I'm sure I'm no different than, that road is no different than any other, but the, the reason why I bring this up is that. I would hope that you start on some type of a program. That you use as a, as a guide, and even if you can't stick to it all the time, that you always return to it, you know what I mean?
Absolutely.
So that, you know, when you do have the money, it becomes available and you, you do the accuracy work on it.
The tangent engineer and I, we talked at Donello. The tangent engineer and I, we talked about getting this plan started because that plan, I, I've seen it and for reasons unknown at the time, and there was probably no money to do some of these things way back then. And a lot of those roads did not get done. I'm not gonna lie to you, they didn't get done from one reason or another. But we're trying to get something started again. So, you know, one foot ahead of the other, you know, get that first step and try to get some of these things done. And to be honest with you, I hope we can do it. Because again, when we get that plan started, say ten, twelve, thirteen years, whatever, whatever that rotation is. Say we do church street as an example, at ten years, eleven years from now, we should be doing it again. Now, absolute hundred percent. I agree with that one hundred percent. So we're trying to get something started.
Do you have, do you have money in the budget to, to, to update that plan?
Corey, the engine, the township manager is updating it as we speak. And once he gets it, once he gets it figured out, then we can present it, show the hell.
Is that money from last year's budget or is it?
Uh, no, no, it's from this, it would be from this year's budget. But he's been, like, he, he has an existing plan. He's just updating it.
Yes.
And we've been pretty on point with the plan he's had. But he's just extending it out a few more years and there may have been one road that we've taken into another road depending on the severity of that road.
Yeah, we know you're looking forward to have a symbol. We do, maybe not the exact plan, but we got a plan like that. I know they've had it since, you know, I've been and, you know, and we're, and we're working on it. Did you, did you send it on a meeting when you saw that?
I did not yet. I was not informed of any meetings yet, but that's fine as soon as they have them, you know.
If I can interject, we did have a conversation.
Yes, yes, absolutely, absolutely.
For the same to the council president, that we will likely be having a meeting either this week or next week. Part of the issue for the delay was the pad over there for gas tanks, you know, getting done. But probably have a sit down meeting with Corey to go over all that. If you wish to participate in that meeting, you certainly be invited.
I would be honored to be. Is that okay with the council?
Keep in mind, one thing that we do, I want to talk to Corey for scheduling these roads. I try to, we both try to schedule, say, road up and amount, road down the valley, road up and amount, road down the valley. To try to try to disperse it. Because I, years ago, when you were, you're trying to get everything done down the valley, but wait, what about us something about, we haven't done nothing, you know? And I try to make it a little more obvious to what we're doing. Try to help out each, you know, each section of town equally, you know. And I think we can do something like that. It's just a matter of working to schedule that. So.
Thank you.
We've had more and more dentary complaints over the years. Some of these ones that we just cannot, we cannot handle ourselves. The fact we just had one last week. We had to have a company, two companies give us quotes on. They're not cheap. This quote, the cheapest one, this was fifteen hundred bucks. I've seen as high as five, six thousand. Depending where they have to get into to keep these trees down. And some of these trees are in a township lot that we own, but they're in back of the other property. So we're bringing it into what we can do.
Exactly. Cut the branches off that are over the property. That's all.
One thing that we were looking at, when we actually went ahead and got now, is the undercarriage washer for vehicles. As Pete and Des, we just, we just got this. It runs off the pressure washer, has wheels, it goes under the carriage and spins around. This thing will spin, spray that, that, that high. I'll let Pete describe a little better. It works great, right?
Yeah, it runs off the pressure washer, four thousand PSI, about five gallons per minute. It rotates on right there. It flushes the frame rails out of the rears underneath the engine compartment.
What do you do with the, with the water?
We have the wash recovery system.
Oh, you do?
Yes, we have the indoor, we have the availability to wash indoors with the water recycler we have.
I have to, I have to tell the rest of the council that I mean, you all know that I'm in the fire department and everything and our fire, and our fire trucks up in Highland Lakes are really taking care of well. And it's because of people like Pete who makes sure that our equipment is good. I don't think he likes coming up to the mountain, so he makes sure it's fixed right the first time when he goes up there. But we never had a problem with getting our equipment fixed and I you, your praises are sung all the time up in the firehouse by the chief and Jimmy and Tommy who work with you.
Thank you.
And thank you for what you do and thank you also. But be that as it may, we're, we're here talking money, you know, so gonna have to do what we have to do, but there's no cutting back on what you guys are doing because it's the milking.
Things have to be done.
Yeah. Yes, yes. It's the milk and cookies that this whole thing is, is work here. Yep.
One of the things that I'm worried about, Pete and I will talk about this, that's why we try to plan as much as we can. The inability of supplies and trucks. It's crazy. Describe a little as far as our, the big trucks and stuff like that. As far as the pipelines and.
Right now, I mean, where the, where the perks are, you're ten months out on a, on a chassis right now. So if you order in July, you're not going to see it until May of next.
And the more bells and whistles on it, the longer it's gonna take you to get.
A set of tires right now can hold the truck up. It just, you know, it depends where it gets held up in customs on its way in. It's a reality right now.
Absolutely. Of course, obviously, I put this down as open request. Everybody knows here how much open request can take so much time. Put those stuff up, pull paperwork out of the archives that they need to make copies. It just, it just takes, it takes you away from what you really need to get done at times, obviously.
If you could figure out a way around it legally.
One thing that I really Maple Ridge Park, the sign has been hit three times.
I just was there. I was like.
It's almost like it's a target, you know?
It's only a pain in the bullseye, actually.
It's like, it's like the barn on the way to high school.
One thing that I was thinking of is maybe a couple of sections of the brown guardrail to protect it, or possibly some nice boulders up front. But we had to think about the little bit, the best, the best possible route to protect that. It's, you know, it's like, what, six thousand, seven thousand dollars for that sign?
Oh, my gosh.
That's like four thousand dollars to get them fixed.
And they don't just, they don't just scratch it. They run it over.
Are there, as you approach that curve, are there signs like caution, slow down, like who's got all, I mean, I drive there all the time, but I don't, I don't remember what's.
Instances for DUIs.
All I can say is when the first time I saw that sign, I said, why in the world are they spending their money? It's gonna get whacked. And can we use a less expensive type of sign? Make it kind of you know, I know it's a beautiful park and you'd like to advertise it, but, you know, kind of make it a throwaway sign type of thing. You know, insurance is gonna cover something, but.
They're covering all of it.
Yeah. For how many, for how many times?
Like I said, the two times that's happened, it was DUIs, the people were arrested, had all their information.
Somebody else is paying for it. It was up a month. The first time, it was up a month.
On the town, right. Absolutely. But we gotta figure something out to help. Until somebody hits it and gets killed.
Okay, thank you.
We do something about updating the lighting inside the garage. We were talking about this a while back. Maybe some kind of ramp for the lighting inside. It's just, it's dark. That's why we need to have some more light. Obviously, you know, to do the work. Working on the DPW, the fire alarm system, working on that. DPW roof improvements. We need ice, the ice cleats and the gutters need to be repaired. The roof that they put in, never had any ice cleats on it to keep the stuff from sliding off. And we've had a couple of close calls where snow and ice had come down. We're out there working also, bush behind it. So this has to be, has to be addressed and moved for, for capital to
That's in the capital budget?
We need to replace two boilers at the missile building. That's another issue that's gonna go out for bid. The one quote was around seventy thousand, waiting on a second quote. We come up with, but that's definitely have to be in the capital for that to go up a bit, that's for sure.
Got it.
Right. And then also, we have to revisit the drainage project, the Mac and Aqueduct. And that's basically what we're looking at as far as our accomplishments concerns. So.
Canister road is looking pretty good in most sections. And you get into Cliffwood Lake and everything changes, you know, it's.
That's another development that has not been paved.
You know.
Don't forget about them.
People. And I say that, I, I say that with, with all sincerity. When you talk to them, they want to know how they can move Miss Milford. They're changing the boundary because they literally feel left out. And I've offered my number, I've offered to speak with them, but no matter what, it's just they're that far away. And, you know, I think kind of like, you know, your, your, your your, your nephew that comes to visit. You haven't seen him for a long time. We may have to, you know, massage the back of their head and, you know, pat them a little bit and, and show them that they're still part of this community, which they are.
Absolutely. You know, there was a gentleman up there I knew forever, great guy, Gene. And he, he loved us to death. And we, we did what we could do as far as getting stuff patched, oil and stone up there. There was also people that fought us on that because they didn't want it.
Right.
And I, I actually explained to the people who are, you know, this isn't, this is a, we're sealing the road. This is a preventant. It's, it's designed to last five years to seal the road so the water doesn't get underneath to create the issues. And once some people heard that, they were, they were fine. Okay, that's, at least you're doing something. And that's what we were trying to do. We've, you know, we've been out there patching, patching, patching. But that's another development that we're gonna have to look into with this, on our schedule to get paid, absolutely hundred percent. And again, we've, they've called up and talked to us, but we're working on something. I can't tell you exactly when, but we'll get out there to get a patch the best we can for you. You get swept, you know, whatever we can do. But as far as, as far as getting it paid, I can't give you a date when that's gonna happen. And that's what I tell them. And so most people are okay with that as long as they know, you know about the problem. Yes, we do. We, we understand it totally. And we're trying to help you out. It's gonna take time. So. Okay, let's see here. Alright, for the salaries, I'd be, this is about two percent, like I was talking to Del, two percent across the board, but we also have contractual deals with the last fee, last fee employees. And there's a couple of part timers that we use that they're fourteen dollars or thirteen dollars per hour. Just was a big, it wasn't cut the deal. We wanted to raise up to fourteen, fifteen dollars for, for part time. And it makes, it just makes sense because we're not getting anybody as far as people coming in wanting to work part time for us. The last person that came in lasted two days, he quit. It wasn't because of money, it was just because that he couldn't put up with, we'd whacked it and stuff. But there are a couple of things that we have to change. And again, that's, again, if we went to fifteen dollars an hour, maybe we might be able to get a couple of better people to help us out in the summertime. Right, exactly. So somewhere out with all.
I did want to point out too, just to be clear, the DPW did add an additional road repairman. So that's why you'll see a large increase too in the regular set.
Okay, I was wondering about that.
Another guy on the road, so. And the amount that was spent last year, so one, the clothing allowance was charged to that line. I never moved it over at the end of the year, so that's usually moved to uniform allowance, but it runs through payroll, so that's why it was charged to this line. There was another thing too.
Something.
I think that's it. Oh, and we, we were, we were actually reimbursed. If you, if you were to look at the balance in that account right now, we have over fifty thousand dollars left in that account because we had some workers comp cases. So workers comp reimburses us a certain dollar amount. So even though it looks like we spent over what was budgeted, we actually have money left over.
So do you anticipate more overtime in twenty twenty two or are you just keeping that flat? I mean, I just see like it was a hundred and three thousand in twenty twenty one and you're budgeting one sixty.
Yeah, we kept the flat because, again, we don't know what the waters are gonna be like. It's just something where when talking to Del about it, we slept at the same, we didn't, we didn't lower it because to be on the safe side. Again, it's just rather keep it there and leave it, rather have it there and not need it than need it and not have it.
And to explain too, so here it says there's a hundred and three thousand that was expended. However, I reimbursed that account about seventy thousand dollars from the large storm we had in February last year. It was like a three day, it was like three days on a Sunday and then a Monday and then with the contractual obligations, it was very expensive. So that's what our storm reserve trust was for. So I took that seventy thousand dollars out of that storm reserve and reimbursed this account.
So.
So if you add about seventy thousand dollars, you're looking at a hundred and seventy thousand is what.
That was what the true.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
But why did you do that? Because the, the, oh, because the budget was only seventy six?
The budget was one sixty.
For twenty?
Twenty twenty one.
Okay, gotcha.
So in February, we had that huge storm and I had the money available in the storm trust. The budget wasn't passed.
Which you can use.
I was gonna say, why, I'm just interviewing, why you took it from that trust? Okay, you took it from the trust because the budget wasn't passed yet. Yes.
Gotcha.
Well, you can also take it from the budget, from that trust, if you've expended all your funds.
Yes.
So, I mean, so, I'm looking at this, I mean.
How much do we have in our storm trust right now?
About three hundred thousand dollars. The, there's the twenty twenty, your actual was seventy six thousand, five sixteen, your budget at a hundred and seventy five. Then twenty one, you're, you, you budgeted a hundred and sixty and your actual was one oh three. Now you're budgeting a hundred and sixty, I'm sorry, you're budgeting a hundred and sixty in twenty twenty two. In, in every year, and you know, it's not your fault, it's just the vagaries of weather. But is there any way we can take some of that money and move it into a reducing, reducing the appropriation? I mean, you have the trust to fall back on.
You have the trust, yeah. You have three hundred thousand dollars in the trust to fall back on.
And then any funds that we don't use too. If there's any funds left over from this year, I would recommend going to the trust.
Yeah.
Let's look at that.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll look at it, see what.
I mean, like, like we've got to the other departments if there's room.
I'm putting you down for easy fifty grand.
Fifty thousand dollar reduction?
That's rough.
I think no.
Yeah, I don't think so.
That's not my call.
It's gonna be the first time that Telfa Drive doesn't get plowed. I've been a salesman all my life.
You don't ask, you don't get.
I understand.
I'm just saying.
That's perfect.
Will always be if we have large expenses.
Of course.
And even though we can go through FEMA for reimbursements, that takes a very long time, like.
Forever.
Finished FEMA's paperwork from an August twenty twenty storm, I think January.
Yeah.
You know, so it takes a long time.
It took four years for Irene and Lee money to come in.
But I think there's some room, maybe not. I think, I think there's some room there and some other, some other lines too, perhaps. There's a little bit of room.
Yeah, one question I have among others. Your snow and ice. Four hundred thousand projected for this year was four and a quarter last year. Budgeted. And then your year to date was three forty three. You do you think you're going to would that, would you be using that much money as well, I mean, with your, with your, you still remove a trust?
So if we had to, the concern, the concern that I would have with decreasing it is something Ed mentioned before, is that the cost of salt and grit.
Okay.
Thy rocketed, right? So even though I did reduce it down to the four hundred, I do have concerns about how much that's gonna actually cost us.
Whether that's even gonna be enough.
Right, because I can tell you right.
Right, and if, and hopefully that is enough and I don't have to go into the trust, right? Um, but if I have to go into the trust, I have to. The concern with constantly going into trusts is you deplete your trust, deplete your trust reserves, right? We need to, we should be able to put some money back into that.
Yeah, you can.
Complete it, right?
You, uh, that's one of the places you can put your money instead of going into your fund balance.
Yeah.
One thing that we did have go, excited with this this year, uh, was we were pulling grits out of North Church at nine dollars and fifty cents a ton. They ran out. So then we had to pull from Plant Hamburg, which turns fifteen dollars a ton.
Hmm.
So, I mean, it, it just, I was a total surprise that they, they were, that they ran out. Uh, after talking to them, we, obviously, we weren't dealing with going down to the county, uh, just about every, the town was going down today. Uh, and they didn't have that much to begin with because they're grits, they don't manufacture grits, grits. What that is, it's a leftover product.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what they sell as grits down the road. So if they're not making it, whatever pile they got, that's what they got.
Yeah.
So.
Byproduct of something else.
Right. So what happened is when they ran out, I, I had to make another, uh, another requisition out for the company down in Hamburg. Because they actually, again, it's another, another byproduct that they, that they store, uh, but it was also better material, which worked out a little bit more for us, but again, it's fifteen dollars compared to nine fifty. And again, with these contracts, like I told you now with the salt, this contract that we're working on now is up at the end of June. So, and I have no idea what their prices are gonna be, but I do know the price for worst kind of co-op right now is seventy-one or seventy-two dollars a ton as of right now, for, for salt. So I, you know, playing the game, we're, we're a little short what we're gonna be looking at.
Yeah.
So we're, we're trying to plan for that. Unfortunately, and there's times when, uh, like they'll just said, like four hundred thousand dollars may not be uh, enough when it comes down the road. Hopefully, knock on wood, at least, you know, this one is over with, hopefully, who knows?
I can imagine how much blacktop is gonna cost and then a couple, you know, with the rise in diesel fuel and everything and it's.
Blacktop right now, put down, I just talked to, uh, our engineer, hey, put down eighty-three dollars a ton.
Eighty-three dollars a ton, holy moly.
It's tall. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's up there, it's going sky high.
Well, I, I understand where we, where we really want to go.
Okay.
Based on your initial comment.
Yes.
Coming from others too. But we need to look critically at our, at our, at every line item in every department to see, uh, um, you know, we might be able to do something in one, not all, but I think that's up to us to kind of take a look at that. But if there's a number we want to get to, you know, we one point seven percent of whatever case might be, we want to get to zero. Uh, please give us the opportunity to decide how are we gonna get there as opposed to not committing to doing something that we said we.
I think that, that, uh, Pat, Pat fifty thousand was a. No, no. It, it. I can show you how we can do it. Okay.
As far as the, my, the regular accounts, uh, they didn't say the state, see the same, a couple have gone down. I had the rates. Air supply, we raised up to fifteen hundred, uh, and that stuff that we move, would use every day, so like, uh, two or four, that kind of style, that's kind of support. One that we had to raise, uh, by five thousand was the, uh, debris removal from our holding area. That's our sweepings, to get rid of our sweepings, wood chips, and stuff like that.
Why was it eighty-nine thousand?
Yeah.
I need to go back and look and see exactly.
That might be an error, you think?
No, 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 I, no, I don't think it's an error, um, but I can get you the detail. I just put a star next to it myself.
Okay.
Okay.
Again, those are the only two that we actually raised. The other ones were all stayed the same or have been lowered. Now, as an example, the, the re-removal, uh, the sweepings from, if we take sweepings to Skuma, uh, they charge five dollars a ton. But unfortunately, those sweepings have to be clean. If, if, if there's a piece of brush in there or something, they, they call it contaminated. If we show up with a, a piece of, say like a bush started growing in it, uh, they'll charge a hundred and fifteen dollars a ton to take it. That's what they call contaminated. So what our guys have to do now, we have to sweep and then try to get it removed where it starts growing or that kind of thing. If we see, we're talking sweepings, so anything that's on the road, like it's picked up in its cups, papers, or we gotta try to get that cleaned out too because that's also considered contaminated. So there's, it's gonna be a little more involved with getting rid of this stuff rather than this, because we used to be able to just go down, scoop it up in the trucks, take, and they took everything. Now they're a little more particular because of, obviously, they use it to cover the landfill. And they don't want anything in it that's going to be, uh, what they consider contamination. Uh, like when we haul Highland Lakes, we haul, we haul Highland Lakes sweepings down, it take over. Usually it's a month or two before we get to it and there'll be bushes growing out of it. And that's the same thing when we take it on, no, that's contaminated. So we have to, or alcohol, haul them in lakes to, as an example, guys, if you get a chance, make sure it's clean before, when we come to pick it up. You know, just take anything, if you see bushes or anything like that, just take it out and then we can haul it out for it. Uh, you know, obviously, saving money is the name of the game and whatever little bit we, we have to do extra that we gotta do. So. Um, okay. Good. Uh, let's see, recycling. Uh, I was kept at the same. Contract, the contract stats, uh, we raised that fifteen hundred bucks. Um, the cost to get rid of recyclable glass, there's a cost for glass, there's a cost for used oil, there's a cloud, there's a cost for plastic. Uh, we, years ago, I should say years ago, up till about two years ago, uh, our plastic container, we took it to one of the vendors for nothing, or they were paying. Now, it's, we're, uh, just past years, last year when this started, if it's, when they dump this thing out, if it's contaminated, they charge a hundred and twenty bucks a ton to take it. So what was happening, we, we had one person working on recycling, so we can't catch everything when the people are putting in there. Uh, when they say contaminated, it's, we take milk jugs, water jugs, you know, that kind of thing. Uh, these black plastic food dishes, they call that contaminated, they don't want that. And at times, that's what they were getting into, plastic bags, like chop rate, AP bags, they don't want that because it gums up the works on their machines. That's contaminated. So unfortunately, with one person working, you can't catch everything. And when we open the tailgate up on this thing, when they see this stuff, oh, you know what, it's a hundred and twenty dollars a ton, sorry guys. So I got a hold of Skuma, uh, and at the very least, when taking over there, they charge forty dollars a ton, even if it's contaminated. Uh, they, they charge twenty dollars a ton if it's not contaminated. And the last few times that we got over there, it's been twenty dollars. I think, uh, we've been there twice, we're just, it's been forty dollars. So it's a no brainer that we just take it to them. And when I talked to, uh, well, now it's Dawn, uh, she, uh, explaining to us that a lot of people just bring it in and it's all coming. So for us to take our stuff over there at twenty dollars a ton, four dollars a ton, it's a no brainer. You know, so, but unfortunately, we have to add that a little bit more into the system. Uh, perfect example, oil, used oil, it's expensive, uh, for, uh, the company to come get it. It's anywhere from five hundred to nine hundred dollars to get the oil from recycling and our garage. You know, it's almost a thousand bucks every time they come. So, and depending on the time of year, they could be here once a month, they could be here once, once every three months. It just, it depends on, on the volume. So unfortunately, we had to raise that. Let's see here. Janitor building, our building, building grounds. Okay.
I think we had a couple of large, um, repairs last year, right? That's around the fifty-six, yeah.
Yeah. We lowered the action, the janitor, janitorial supplies was lowered up at a thousand. Uh, the one that we did add was, uh, the contractual for the fifty-four thousand. Uh, we needed to add the furnaces, boilers for the missile building and to the DPW to the vendor that's gonna do our service. They were never in the contract to be serviced originally. So now that we're getting new furnaces over here, we got two new boilers over the DPW, they need to be serviced. So the one that doesn't, that's, that's the whole town force, we needed to add the money so that they could take care. It's just, it's a no brainer, you know, they, they knew the whole building, they know the HVA system. And for them to come in and take care of it while they're here, except it's a no brainer, it's gonna, you know, it's a little more money, but it's gonna pay off in a long, 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 because again, with the boilers downstairs, uh, if there had been more maintenance, that possibly wouldn't be able to catch the problems going on. Uh, we're not sure, but again, this has to be done. Now, so, um, let's see here. You know, same, about the, uh, the repairs. Right, let's see. Uh, fleet. Uh, fleet, obviously, the salaries, we raised that, uh, you know, based on the percent. Uh, again, we also have, uh, the guys that are in the, uh, the union, the Aspen Union, the contractual. Um, one thing we did lower was the, uh, the conference education that we lowered that from a thousand to five hundred. Uh, everything else under, we kept the same, uh, as far as the repairs, two hundred and twenty thousand for vehicle, fire truck, forty-seven thousand, uh, so forth. Um, now as far as parks go, uh, we lowered the seasonal, uh, part-time up to eight thousand. Again, we haven't got that many people that, that come into workforce. Uh, if we are able to get anybody, I want to be able to pay them fourteen and fifteen dollars to keep them. You know, then we can adjust the time that they're, usually we try to keep them here for two months. Uh, but it also depends on when they go back to school. Some of, some of the guys that we've had are college kids. You know, so they'll, they may be here all June and July, and September they're gone, September first. Or they get out of school in June, so they'll be here July and part of, part of August possibly. It, this depends on their schedule. So we're a little bit flexible as far as that goes, but just get, just to try to get them here, that's the issue.
How about high, high school seniors? Um, are we a problem there with age or?
As long as they're eighteen, they can drive, we're, we're good. The trouble is, it's just a matter of getting the people, the applications in.
Think they're aware that you're looking?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we've, we've advertised.
Do you reach out to the school?
Uh, we haven't reached out to the schools.
But please, I think you should, you know.
That's an idea.
Call the, uh, the guidance counselors because there's people that are, you know, counseling the young, you know, the youngsters up there and, uh.
And we give it a shot, absolutely.
I think definitely, I think there's definitely, um, you know, because they, they actually had part-time janitors. They had students that were part-time janitors and, um, and they were interested in working, so I think, I think you might be able to get.
Absolutely, we can, we can touch base with them, sure, see what's coming up.
You know, it's a shirt soft, get a tan and.
Ways and Ivy. Yeah. Uh, yeah, definitely, we'll, we'll reach out to them, see what, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Um, and let's see, uh, one last thing for parks, the maintenance, we, uh, we actually cut that down to the forty thousand. That may be the only one that I'm sort of kind of worried about because we're at sixty, is when we were talking about.
Yeah, just based on, so, um, at the like middle end, I should say, last year, like in the fall of last year, um, we actually had quite a bit of money left in there. Um, so there were some purchases that we made out of that account that I know we're not gonna make again this year. Um, so, um, I'm comfortable with that number, but.
Yeah, I was just gonna, as we get closer, we'll have to see, maybe we have to ask, right, later on down the road, that's for sure.
So you have the radio repair, is that, Danell? Uh, there was zero spent in twenty twenty-one for.
Correct.
Repair. Do we anticipate spending that sixty thousand this year?
Replace a bunch of radios.
I was just gonna have Pete talk about this, they should be in in the next few weeks.
You'll be paying that bill?
Yeah.
Uh, no, 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 so we replaced out of capital last year. Um, we replaced radios, so that's probably why we didn't have any, um, repairs.
Okay, so maybe that's a, that's an area that you could look at.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, because we're good, if we get these new radios, we wouldn't need that.
Wouldn't need that, yeah. So that could be something that maybe you can take a pencil to.
Absolutely. Um, I brought Pete with me today, uh, to just touch base on some of these capital owners, if you, if you guys want to. Uh, it, this is stuff that we need, so I'll think about it.
Once with the twenty twenty-two capital plan, right?
At that last.
Yes.
Okay.
And we were going to replace with ninety-four, done your loader.
Nineteen ninety-four?
Yes, ninety-four.
Okay, that's about time.
An hour's on, it's all written. Here, he just brought it out, it's obsolete from, from, uh, John Deere. To replace that, I have to quote for a hundred and ninety, a hundred and ninety-four thousand, I believe.
Pete, can you give me the update, the most updated ones? Because I don't know if it's gonna go up. I just feel like everything is going up.
I've been, actually, Dave Smith's supposed to stop by on Wednesday. He's gonna have an updated one for me then, and he's gonna provide a, uh, trade-in allowance. Too.
Hmm.
That's one machine that does all the telething. It doesn't.
I was gonna say, it doesn't owe you anything, yeah.
Two things I just wanna, um, touch on, because I know Pete's not gonna go over this because it's not in his plan like separately. But Plowson Sanders and the additional equipment for the vehicles, since we started the enterprise program, um, we charge those additional equipment to capital. So it's just, it's not, because it's the outfitting of the vehicles, so that's why it's two separate lines in there.
Okay.
See, I just wanted to, because it's not in here.
Sorry. Next was the, uh, three-point hitch mounted snow blower. Could use that for, uh, cleaning the snow out of the bike path over the park, did a hit on that. You won't have snow banks piled up if we're melting it. We have to clean this, when we go over there, we have to clean the holes for them up. It's not like we can go there halfway through, you know, clean up four inches and clean up four inches. You get a foot of snow, we have to cover it, clean up a, a foot of snow. So we'll mount that on, on back of our Kubota tractor we have, more, uh, road mowers, we'll take them all off for the winter. Put that on there, enclosed cab, should make things a whole lot easier for the guys. That was, that was right around fifty-five hundred.
I think I have that in reserves. The items that I have on here, um, I have them, I have a mower for twelve-five, the, um, utility machine, the Dingo.
Dingo.
Yeah, yeah.
Hmm.
Um, for seventy, a basin cleaner, retrofitting on the tanker would be fifty. And then I have like smaller ones that I included in reserves for DPW because they're cash items.
Again, we just wanted to touch base with those, so, but those are what we're looking at.
But I wanted to explain to the council knows like that fifty-five hundred is a smaller item that's in reserves.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And what we're planning on, like they'll just said, uh, will be ninety-two, you can spend, so as far as virtual fitting. We're gonna repurpose one of our, it'd be Vernon's, uh, water tanker, fire truck, ex-fire truck. Where I have a tank removed on a conventional center bearing drive line install. We're gonna get the tank back, be able to auction that off. We're gonna take the, the old basin cleaner truck, it's a nineteen, nineteen ninety-two CF forty thousand chassis. Parts are obsolete for this anymore, you can't get parts for chassis. So we're gonna have that unit taken off and put on the expired. Parts are still available for that, still in production. That should be, I mean, I don't know if it's close to that, it should be right around close to fifty thousand for that.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. Hopefully everything comes together with it. And we were asking, we've got, I mean, the council has worked with us over the years and got us a lot of equipment and they make our jobs a whole lot easier, you know, in the past. So, I mean, now we're not asking for as much. Our equipment's in all great shape with the enterprise, the fleet lease, hopefully with the COVID, I'm staying positive with the whole.
We got, we got like really, I don't know the right words.
COVID really kicked us a little bit.
Yes.
We're sort of kind of about to eat more right now. Yeah, we have three trucks on order right now. Hopefully Ford, Ford has agreed to build them. I hope they're not pulling my fingers on it, so.
Yeah, our rams were stopped, we had ordered five, five rams. In January last year, they stopped production on them. Um, and then the numbers for twenty twenty-two models came out October. We had like two weeks to get the order in.
Yeah, and they, they stopped production right up to. Yeah, and they, they stopped production right up to, yeah, two weeks, they placed the order, then they stopped. Stopped accepting orders. Really, we put in, I think, for, for five. Ford said maybe four, they agreed to build us three five-fifties and one three-fifty for the sign department for this year. Hopefully they build, that was back, uh, two months ago, they accepted that, but they won't start production on that till, I think, May or June, May or June. Hopefully they come through. Uh, we're gonna be in a bad way with small trucks next year.
Anybody else, guys?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Get Michelle next, because she's dying back there.
Been waiting. Oh, my gosh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night, fellas.
Oh, sorry, uh, eighteen.
You wanna start with some of your projects and?
Sure.
Okay.
So just in case, you know, you, you guys aren't all aware, I have two partnerships that are in recreation. And so through COVID, a lot of things shut down, but we we rose up and involved to see what we could bring to the community, even with social distancing and being shut down. And, um, a lot of it was outdoors. So main concern was the mental health and well-being, the sense of community. Vernon saw a humongous influx of families. Strangely enough, due to COVID, um, people came to Vernon. So we were able to continue with a lot of our outdoor programs and we were able to start, um, even some new ones. Farmer's market really took off and now has become the senior center is finally back open, we're very happy to say, except for lunches, which that comes through guidelines from the state that go to the county that come to us. Came a grab and go type situation, um, where pre-COVID, we were seeing fifty, sixty people coming every day to sit inside. Um, and we're pretty much up to forty, fifty people coming every day to pick up. So that pretty much continues. Uh, we were happy to see that we were able to bring back picnic, um, senior of the year, holiday luncheon. We had a holiday market, as the police mentioned, you know, we evolved our typical trunk-or-treat event into a better trick-or-trail Halloween event, um, incorporating the walking path at Maple Grange. We now have an annual nine eleven remembrance ceremony. Operation Toy Train comes back to Vernon, it took a little detour during COVID, so we were happy to see that. While we were closed down internally, though, we took an opportunity to update the senior center. It really hadn't been updated since it was built twenty-five years prior, now we're on thirty years. So we're able to brighten it up, put a few things in the ADA doors, we're waiting on some chairs that are more easily sanitizable, that Glenwood Baptist Church is actually gifting us with. That's really, really nice, because chairs are expensive. We provide free food markets for the community because food security and health. Was huge.
All right, now that.
It's pretty good how you did that.
You muted him, okay.
You read your voice pretty well.
She threw her voice pretty well.
Wait, I'm gonna try it again.
Not gonna work.
It'll work. Uh, okay, vaccine clinics, um, many of you probably know about Vernon Cares and that they delivered food through the Trax Deli, in coordination with the Trax Deli, um, for uh, every day, seven days a week, for over a year straight, to people who couldn't leave their house, weren't leaving their houses. The elderly, the frail, the immune compromised, just people who were afraid, so that was a really huge thing. Um, at the parks, coordinating with EPW, we were able to put in a new walkway at Veterans Park. We seal-coded the walkway at Maple Grange Park. All three turf fields have successfully been replaced and will be good for another fifteen-plus years now, which is a really great thing. And with the short-term rental, if I'm correct, right, Donna, that money that we receive from the short-term rental tax is put aside to help replace the turf fields in the future, so we don't have any issues with that. Um, snack bars have been updated or still in progress and we're working on lighting, safety net, bedding and landscaping. New programs that we're able to bring, um, with the senior center, we've really incorporated a lot more art programs. They enjoy that and we're able to do it outside and we also have increased our exercise programs by co- coordinating with the PAL and using their indoor and outdoor space, which is huge. This year, we're excited, in just a few weeks, we have an Easter egg trail hunt coming up with four hundred and sixty people registered. So it's really exciting, that one. Sussex County Senior Citizen Olympics is coming to Vernon this year, so there will be six other towns and dignitaries and freeholders and assemblymen, and I hope all of you, if you can make it during the day on June twenty-ninth, Maple Grange Park for the Sussex County Senior Citizen Olympics. We're also able to coordinate with Rs. and Ws. for me, in Warwick, a couple more, um, through a grant for the RISE program, because the schools used to be able to send, um, certain developmentally challenged children to this stable for therapeutic programs and they stopped, so I was able to successfully get a grant that we could work with the schools to have children go again, so that was really exciting for two thousand and twenty-one. This is eleven A, uh, PM voice going on here, sorry, it's not COVID or anything. So in general, we just keep building our relationships with civic groups, businesses, committees, boards and organizations to have a unified community, community, um, and to bring as many local laws, regional laws to both us and the participants to our community. Burning it out. That we were able to do last year for the first time since before COVID and we had a great turnout. And then overall, we just keep trying to promote Vernon in the best way that we can. As DPW mentioned, the message board is a really great attribute to get messages out. Um, sense of community pride, our parks look great, our building looks great, it's our two hundred and thirtieth anniversary, so we really wanna just be out there saying, this is really what Vernon's about and we're proud to be here. So that's a lot of things that we work on.
Excellent.
It's late, so I'm trying not to like. Do admin and talk against.
You wanna, you wanna ask if the council have any particular questions? Uh, line items resident are going through, or what could we do that, if that's okay with the council?
Yeah, oh, yeah, definitely, yeah.
Me too.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, well, I think, I mean, you heard our comments, my comments towards other, um, departments, so I, you know, I've highlighted some, you probably already looked at them saying, hmm, what is she, what, because you, you've heard it, um, you know, there's some here like um, service contracts, it looks like we paid thirty-three, seven fifty in twenty twenty-one and there's a budget of forty-five, so do you expect more service contracts or is there room?
Forty-five, that's the PAL service contract, so.
Got their final.
Just hasn't been paid out.
Yeah, we got their final invoice in January.
Okay, so that's exactly, okay.
That, that is forty-five thousand.
That is truly that.
Contract for fifty thousand is with Skylands.
What do they do for us? What is PAL?
PAL?
Yeah, what do they do?
They have been contracted since the implementation of a recreation department with the township to do many programs, more with the younger children. And so they do programs for four, five and six-year-olds, including basketball and wrestling. They do our summer fun eight-week program that they're now coordinating with the schools to, um, expand the PAL program and take, um, some of the school programs in over the summer. They do pickup programs for soccer, lacrosse, wrestling and karate all year long. They used to do summer tennis, but that kind of phased out, people weren't as interested, so instead they have indoor pickleball, which is now huge, I don't know why it's called pickleball, but it is. Yeah, like, I don't get it, but that's okay, I don't play it, I don't understand the name, it's fine. Um, they also have added to clinics, um, by coordinating with the high school varsity coaches that they provide for all sports. The fishing derby had almost phased out to near extinction. Um, and last year it had its greatest attendance in probably a decade and it will be April twenty-third of this year. They provide consignment discount tickets to the community. Um, one of the things they used to do was a couch-to-five K program and then throughout COVID, it obviously was affected and then it was basically run by a group of lead volunteers and coordinators, but they branched off to run private programs, which is great, because then they're making money for it. But we really can't support two of the same exact program in one community at the same time. So they're, they're working on some alternates for that, but in the meantime, as I mentioned, they have taken on hosting um, indoor and outdoor senior citizen classes, um, two to three times a week for the past two and a half. And they have also set up open gym time for the special needs residents, uh, which is pretty huge to give them that. Vernon Day, COVID affected, but we have one on the calendar for June eighteenth this year. The five K race, again, not to just keep saying COVID, 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 but it was affected. Um, they're under discussion for a swim race for this year, they also helped the Vernon Rec Board and Rec Department out with the Turkey Truck Five K Race. Trunk-or-treat we talked about, that's now trick-or-trail, but the PAL is the lead organizer on that and they coordinate with me to make it happen. Mummies in the park, yoga has become a year-round program and our full-ended holiday tree lighting. The PAL takes control over organizing, coordinating that program. So they do quite a bit for their forty-five million dollar contract. They have the staffing, they have the facilities, they have the connections through youth leadership for volunteers. And as a nonprofit, they have access to many grants that we don't. So it's, it's really well said.
Do they, um, do they report back to the township, but what, exactly what they're doing?
Um, we coordinate on many of the bigger township events, programs that have just been going on their own for twenty years at this point, like Safety Town. I really don't have much input into that, they run it, it works, they don't, they don't need me or, um, you know, any reporting back to me about it.
The contract pretty well defined on what they're supposed to do, or is it just?
That's everything in the contract, everything I just read.
Because that's what's exactly.
That's exactly what's listed out for them to be doing.
That's what, the contract is a two-year contract. I signed it in twenty twenty, it's coming up, you're seeing it at the end of the year.
End of this year.
And we're already looking at, in fact, Michelle and I, we've, we've looked at programs that they had that didn't work out, that wasn't because of people's attitude changes, not just COVID.
Trends.
Yeah.
Affordations, age.
Yeah.
Things growing and new ones coming in.
It's gonna be, well, it's gonna be redefined.
So, so what we'll do, what the contract, we'll, we'll have a contract and we'll have presented with the council, for the council to approve it, you'll be able to see the list of items and everything in it and their requirements, whatever.
It's gonna come out this year.
Yeah.
The contract's the end of this year.
Yeah.
At the end of this year, so, so we'll, sometimes at then, near the end of this year, we'll bring a new contract forward, you'll think.
And it'll, it'll be well-defined, exactly what they're gonna be doing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is listed out.
Have a list. In fact, I think about thirteen things in that, in that, in that list of items. Specific thing, there's some general stuff, but there are thirteen very specific programs, according to the contract.
Okay.
What's in the contract.
Right, and then whether it's in the contract or not, we, we're basically, we have a marriage and we work hand-in-hand in so many things because we complement each other's facilities and programs with what we have to bring. So for example, the, the Olympics, it's, it's a county-run program, Vernon is hosting it, but I've already been in touch with the PAL and they're going to supply their tent and volunteers and some sports equipment. That's not in a contract, but we just, we do it, we just work with each other on, on so many things.
Got it, thanks.
All right. Um. On the senior citizens', uh, salary wages, you're in twenty, your twenty twenty-one actual was thirty thousand, you're now looking at a twenty-two budget of fifty-five thousand.
Correct. So what happened, um, in the past was we were very fortunate to be able to coordinate with many different county employment programs. So this isn't necessarily county employment programs. Of various different people. They would provide staff to five to six people year-round through their programs, it's, um, half volunteer and, and half through their, their programs of employment. And they would help staff the senior center. With COVID, as with everything, um, they weren't getting the participants, so, and they phased out, they only qualify for these programs for certain time periods. So they phased out and they weren't being replaced, but the senior center was still running, even if it was outdoors and grab-and-go. So we took Jane from helping part-time in recreation, who turned full-time in the senior center and then added two additional part-time employees to cover the needs of running the senior center and fulfilling the nutrition contract that we have with the county as a site.
So that, that difference is twenty-five thousand is for new personnel?
Yeah.
And so there was no cost when the county provided the employees, there was no cost?
Wanted to just make sure I explained it correctly, the county, they, these were people that go through different county employment programs and unemployment programs to have a job. Um, and they, they only last for so long and they would, they would provide, they would have enough people that they were able to provide us five to six people year-round.
And no, you did notice to Vernon, you didn't pay, the county was paying the salary, gotcha. So now they, they don't have that benefit anymore because of COVID.
People just.
They don't apply for it.
Have the participation, none of the programs.
Wow.
Because there's certain guidelines that they have to meet to participate in these programs and, um, we even ran ads to help get people for the program so they could come work here for the senior center and we just couldn't get anybody and we need our contract with the county for the nutrition site says we need a site manager and a kitchen manager, um, and then just to be able to fulfill the duties to serve the meals for the nutrition site, we need the two part-time people.
Take it from me, who owns a business, that finding employees is pretty challenging.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand.
Machine down there, though, everybody has their standard job and, uh, when we do open that.
This is bad.
Social distancing as far as the county nutrition site is concerned, it's all still in place, so it's a little challenging.
It is challenging.
Yeah.
I, I feel for every department that's come up here and talked about the, the lack of employees, because it's, 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 this is bad.
Yeah, I mean.
It's not, it's.
We have great volunteers and they help us with so many programs and, and activities.
People don't wanna work.
As community and recreation, I mean, we bring the happy, right, so, yeah. As community and recreation, I mean, we bring the happy, right? So, yeah.
All right.
A lot of volunteers that really, really helped out with that, but we still need staff.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So recreation salary and wages, you're knowing you have a, a ten thousand dollar increase.
So as I would mention, Jane used to, um, be split. By taking a little bit of recreation and senior center administrative work. But her to senior center full time and then hire a part time person.
Do we need the part time person?
Absolutely. Administrative work behind each and every program that we do is tremendous. And as I mentioned, we do try to get grants where we can. Um, and it's just, the programs would not be able to sustain without having assistance.
Yeah. I, I, they need the employees and I, I fully support the fact that you, I think you need more.
I don't argue with that.
Then you're not gonna be looking to reduce taxes, you're gonna be increasing taxes.
That, that's right.
Yeah, right.
That's correct.
Yeah. So the people that you're trying to help.
Well, recreation.
Since what you're doing with the senior citizens in that group is you're, you're. You're, we're providing more services, then we're charging them more and, and increased taxes.
This is a recreation town.
Well, there, there are social and mental wellbeing. I mean, through COVID, that was huge.
It's a.
Missed each other. They need.
It's just my opinion.
I, I understand and I'm just gonna take issue with it because as I said earlier, the biggest demographic that you have in this community. Is senior citizens.
And that's who they're serving.
Yeah.
Exactly who they're serving. The senior center, senior center.
Thank you. Do you have any question?
Um, no, I mean, I, I just gonna repeat what I say each time.
Yeah, I have room. They go through and I said, I did try to drop down a little bit. Um, one of our lines is for equipment in the senior center and I was able to work with the county through the nutrition site to. Replace, um, a freezer that I just kept trying to Band-Aid fix.
Mm-hmm.
So we, we dropped our equipment line down a thousand. Um, we also dropped down education and conference center marks, center marks down a thousand. Um, so I have already tried to cut a little bit where I can, materials and supplies. I cut down five hundred dollars. Of course, I can look and try to cut down a little bit more, but. Minimal for programs and office.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Michelle.
Did we wanna go over the one capital thing that?
Oh.
Well, so on here we have. This is second field and a plan to eventually have that entire park. A muscle meeting that's at Maple Green. The current lighting there is very antiquated, outdated and dangerous and it's not set up for. The park as it is now, it's set up for the park as it was originally designed with a football field and basketball courts. And they're just not there. Um, so it is something that would.
Just to replace, replace the lights that are there right now?
The lights that are there right now are antiquated, outdated and dangerous.
So it's not in addition to, this is to replace?
Place.
Okay.
Do they work?
Hmm, they're dying out one by one. We had one actually, um. Spark out shooting fireworks during a Little League game where they had to stop the game and evacuate the field basically because of risk of. Somebody getting.
That really happened.
Um, and as they die out, we were not able to repair them or replace them with what's there. So, um, one by one, it's like ten little enemies, one by one's coming down. And then we also have in here a bin shell which, um, just continued to be on my. Five year capital plan. Each year I just update it and keep that in there because it will come one day. Not this year maybe, but it will come one day. Any questions, anyone?
Thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Excellent job.
Thank you.
I suppose so, yes, I'll go. Number ten, my little tab. Just wanted to, um, uh, go over some things that the clerk's office, um, does. We, we, we do a lot more than, um, I think, uh, we are.
You do more than Oprah's.
We do more than Oprah's, yes. Um, although we do do a lot of Oprah's as, as you can even see Oprah affects even the DPW, which is. Awful, but anyway, it has to be done. I know it, um, but not only that, but. Um, you know, the, we are also the registrar's office, Vernon Township. Um, we take care of all the marriages. Um, death certificates, um, uh, marriage licenses, um, birth. We have one, we have a couple every year, whether it's in the car or somebody had a home birth. Um, and from that, we, um, the clerk's office does bring in money for that. Um, we, um, do certified copies for marriage, death and birth. Um, last year I raised our certified copy fee from seven dollars each to ten dollars each. Um, and in twenty twenty one, the clerk's office just for marriage, um, certified copies. Bought in almost thirteen thousand dollars. Um, we bought in four hundred and twenty nine dollars in marriage license fees, which is very unfortunate because. We charge twenty eight dollars, um, for a marriage license and the seat gets twenty five of each of that. And we only get three dollars.
That's terrible.
Not our choice, that's just, we have to do. Um, we also, um, charge for wedding ceremonies that the mayor, um, performs. Um, the clerk's office bought in two thousand dollars for wedding ceremonies. Um, a very big thing that the clerk's office takes care of is the vacant and abandoned property invoices. Um, in twenty one, we sent out a hundred and eighty invoices. Um, and we bought into the township a hundred and eighty one thousand dollars. Um, we also take care of, we had an ordinance, um, in twenty twenty one for long term rental. Um, applications, um, so that started last August. So from August to December, we bought in seventeen hundred dollars. Um, this year there'll be a little bit more in that because it'll be from January to December. Um, uh, liquor licenses, our yearly permit fees, um, bought in twelve thousand dollars. Um, our assembly permits and miscellaneous, um, and again, because of COVID, there weren't as many assembly permits. But we did still bring in four thousand dollars. Um, we processed in twenty twenty one, six hundred and forty six Oprah requests. And even though most of them, um, we cannot charge for, we still bought in two thousand dollars. So altogether, um, the clerk's office put in two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in twenty twenty one. Uh, I wanted you to know this because every, um, every time someone comes to our window to, um. Pay for this, they also bring us an application that needs to be processed. It's a lot of work, a lot of paperwork. Um, I have a full time employee in there and a part time employee who are the best. Uh, they're wonderful. Um, the best thing about it is I can leave the office if I have to have a day off. And I know that everything running in there is fine, the phone is being answered. Um, and the people that come to the counter are being taken care of. Um, when I started in two thousand nineteen, I started at the end of two thousand nineteen, literally, um, December twenty sixth. My first meeting in two thousand twenty was reorganization. Um, that was my first budget here, two thousand twenty. Um, I cut my budget immediately. Um, I took out the recording secretary line, um, I do my own minutes. Um, the, um, former clerk was paying for, um, a legal program. Um, she was also an attorney, so she took it upon herself to, um. Act like the attorney, I suppose. Um, I right away took that program out. Um, it was actually not easy to get rid of. I had to prove to the company that was supplying it. Why we didn't need it anymore. Um, that was two thousand dollars a year. Um, I also do all of the town's affidavit of publications. So anytime, um, we, uh, put something in the newspaper, um, legally, we have to by statute have a. Um, affidavit of publication to prove that it was, um, published. Um, I took over doing all of them. Every ad that we placed in the paper, I think it was seven or eight dollars. We were paying, um, per ad. So I'm doing them for the clerk's office for, um, land use. For anybody, any, uh, administration. So those are some of the things that, um, I cut right away in the clerk's budget. Um. I know that there are a couple items that, um, Pat, um, council president had a couple concerns about and he'd asked me about. One of them was, um, elections. I know it, it reads election supplies. But that line is actually for elections that the, um, county charges us. Um, every election that we have, the county charges us. We don't know what it's gonna be. Um, the county breaks up the, the county election costs by, obviously by town. We are the biggest township. We have the most, um, election polling places, so we. You know, we get the most machines, we get, um, uh, you know, the most mailing ballots. Um, so that all gets charged to us, printing, um.
Poll workers too, the poll workers.
Poll workers, um, they get paid and believe me, the, the county does not pay them. That gets broken up. Yes, I mean, you know, the county also has their budget. So they take their election budget and I'm sure that, like I said, they divide it, um, between the.
And we have not received, we have not received the general election yet.
So when, when you're looking at that and you see the, um, twenty three, three ninety nine, that does not include the twenty twenty one. General election.
Haven't got it yet.
Nope, haven't gotten billed for that and I, you know, it's so hard, like I budget, I have in there forty thousand dollars. I'm even nervous about that.
Jeff was here, why didn't you ask him?
Yeah, where's my bill?
He swore us in.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you know.
They may not be charging us because they like the people they got.
Maybe, that could be. Well, you know.
Maybe they forgot.
Maybe they forgot. They, they'll remember, believe me. We just got all new election equipment, um, and. Be getting charged for that eventually.
Given some of that equipment too, like we had to buy new.
Well, that's it too. Anything we had to supply. Which I will have to do again, any extension cords, they supply the equipment for us to use for the election. You know, but they don't supply power cords, they don't supply, um, you know, they could, they could, I could need twenty. Twenty.
Running around like church in the firehouse and you're bringing an extension cord?
Oh, yes. Yep, yep, we have them all marked. Um, yeah, so that's like.
That's something to talk to them about.
That's also in that election.
I have his number.
And this year, because they just got the new equipment, you would think it got smaller, it got bigger. So now we have to figure out how we're getting all this equipment to the polling places.
You have to pick it up from there.
They, they usually deliver it here. Now they wanna deliver it to the, the polling places. But a day earlier and pick it up a day later, but they also want it locked up. So, yeah, all these, so that, I've been speaking to the DPW, um, men. About that because they, I have, um, a couple guys from the DPW that are amazing with these elections. I mean, I really, I couldn't do it without them. So that's one of my big items of the budget. Um, Pat had also asked me about, um, uh. What was, what was the other one? Advertising.
And salary.
Well, salary, yeah. No, I know you want it. Um, but by advertising budget is for any time. Um, I advertise, um, an ordinance, they have to be advertised twice. So that's two advertisements and ordinance. Um, it could be for, like, I have to advertise the budget. You know, that's, that, that costs a lot. Um, any special meetings, I have to advertise. Um, so I can, I can definitely, you know, reduce that. A couple thousand dollars, but I don't wanna, um, you know, leave myself flat in that budget, in that line item. Um, otherwise, I mean, I'm pretty much, you know, right there. In twenty twenty, my, um, uh, my education budget was a lot more because. Um, Lauren, my full time assistant, um, went and took all the clerk classes. Um, she, it will be taking her exam again in April. Um, which would be great because I'm hoping that, um, she could become my deputy clerk instead of just, not just, but. Instead of an assistant, because if there's a deputy clerk and I'm not there, she can certify. You know, resolution, she can sign for things. Um, so that, that I, I was very happy.
Can take the place of a clerk and an assistant can only assist the clerk.
A deputy can take the place of a clerk in my absence.
Yeah.
So you know, you never know. I always bring up my mom who, you know, is not well, you know, I, like tomorrow, I'm taking off to take her to the doctor. You know, stuff like that. I mean, I could, I could be out for a long period of time. It would definitely be wonderful to have somebody there. As a deputy.
Salaries, I know you just mentioned that.
Yeah.
Um, so salaries, we budget for, there is a part time person in Marcy's office, so we budget for what. She should fully work. Um, last year she took off an extended period of time that was unpaid, so there was significant savings, which is why the full amount was not. In there. Um, again, there's, will be a little bit of retro added to this from the UAW contract that we just settled. Um, and because of that one union employee that's in that office, there are steps and the percentage, so. That's why it's the one sixty five and plus again, there are large savings from when she was out.
All right. Do you have any questions?
No. You see anything else? I mean, suggest anything, you know, if I could cut it, I will. I, I literally. Treat my budget here like I, I do my house. I don't like spending money. I really don't. I, you know, came in, I saw waste and I was like. Uh-uh. So, you know, just let me know.
Like what I hear.
Uh-huh, yeah.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Before you go any further, there was a, I missed asking the question to the gentleman in the DPW. Maybe either of you can answer it. Guess. The. The twenty, the twenty twenty one actual was one hundred and sixty seven thousand. I guess this is gallons or dollars? Let's call it either way, call it dollars.
Dollars.
Mm-hmm.
All right, and the budget was for one ninety. Twenty twenty two budget is for a hundred and thirty five thousand.
Um.
Why would we be going down that much in view of, I mean, is the savings in the depot that?
No, 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 it's actually no savings. Um, okay, so there's actually a split. So in the past, we've had. Just a gasoline line and we would charge the whole amount. We use Bob Baldwin's, he sends us the bills, but both diesel and regular gasoline is included in those bills. So it was charged that one line. I split it out for next year, um, and I split that because there's different prices, there's. The state contract is set up differently, so, um, I think there were separate vendors for those prices, so it's why I split them out.
Good.
Uh, but this is an issue that I was gonna bring up with council because when I created this budget. Even in January, I did not anticipate, you know, five dollars a gallon for diesel.
Right.
Um, so, I mean, it's my recommendation that this be increased. Because I have a concern about, I don't know when this is gonna end.
What about your reserve for this?
That could be full.
I'm sorry?
Isn't there a mechanism for a reserve? Should you, should you, your line, please?
For gasoline?
Yeah.
Uh, no. No, there's no, there's no approved trust for anything like that, no. I mean, there's a mechanism, excuse me, a mechanism where we could do an emergency appropriation. In order to emergency appropriation though, you have to realize that you have to raise that in next year's budget and it's within your cap.
I see.
So if you needed an extra thirty thousand dollars, that means you are, you automatically add that thirty thousand dollars onto your budget next year and. You have to raise it within your cap.
So what do you recommend?
I would put in another thirty.
I agree.
I just, just to be safe. I, I mean, I think that's conservative, but. I just, just to be safe. I mean, I think that's conservative, but I would do it just to be safe because I, I, I really don't know. I don't think anybody knows.
Plus, we're not going to give it for the same price we're getting from Boulder.
Right, and the state contracts are usually, they come up like July, August.
I mean, are we working with the Board of Education with those, these prices?
We've made the offer.
And?
Haven't gotten a response yet. They said they will consider it. I said, well, don't wait too long. They don't have a lot of vehicles. They have primarily, I think it's a dozen pickup trucks.
When I asked the mayor to work with us to get a zero flat budget, I, I was kind of hoping that somebody would get that message to the Board of Education too, because uh,
Thank you, Brian.
It's the only place in this town where if you need to spend money, they'll show you. I mean, they're, they're going to show you how to spend that money.
Thank you, because if we can come up with a no increase budget, we now become the example.
Yep. And I'm going to, and I'm going to wholeheartedly agree with that. Um, I made a comment to, to the mayor and um, I, I fully support a 0% increase. And it's, we have to strive for that. And, and we have to go line by line to, 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 to get it down. And to eventually, if, if it need be, dip into a fund balance to get to there, that's what we should do.
I don't think you really need to. I, I.
As, I think at the end, like, like go line by line. If it comes to that.
No, it comes, I think, I think it's a combination of some reductions in certain appropriations, visits to the, 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 the garden state trust, you know, for the trust fund. And, you know, perhaps, you know, a, a bigger tap on the, on, on the uh, on the fund balance. You know, there's your delinquent taxes, uh, you know, there, there are a number of areas that I've looked, that I think we could possibly do, but, you know. We have time, we have some time and I think if, you know.
Yeah.
Danell and the mayor and Chuck want to put their heads together, fine. Otherwise, you know, we can do it ourselves. I mean, it's just a question of what we, we need to do.
I feel like we're headed in the right direction here.
Absolutely.
I think the, the fund balance is, is, uh, meant to be for a rainy day and, and a rainy day is here. Inflation at seven. It hasn't rained in the last two years. It's, it'll never rain.
You generated almost three thou- $3 million from 19, from operations in the 2021, so.
Right.
Bad.
In that report.
I do my homework.
I know. Um, you want me to present finance?
Yes, please.
Um, so projects, yes, kidding. Um, 2021 projects from the finance department included the 2021 bonds. So we bonded out $15 million in debt that was taken between 2011 and 20.
Yeah, bonds, not bands, right?
They were bands. Um.
Okay.
And they didn't all reach their, so bands can roll over for 10 years, right? So you can have a note over for 10 years. They didn't reach their full useful, their full max, but interest rates were so low, it was a no-brainer um, to lock those in. So we did permanently finance that. Um, and the decrease in interest paid over time is obviously important and also it sets, it sets our debt service schedule um, moving forward. So we know exactly how much we're going to be paying for those bonds moving forward. Uh, also, there were note schedule changes, so with regards to the bond anticipation notes, the bands, um, the township was going out four times a year for those, which costs us every single time we go out for them. Um, so I revamped that schedule to ensure that there was a decreased cost on the budget for that, for bond council and also for our um, financial.
What does it cost us to go for a ban now?
Uh, so our finance, it depends on what bond council.
Yeah, I understand.
Right. Um, I think they were like $2,500 just for like a $1.7 million. The one we did in October was about $500. Um, but the bond, the rollover that we do in March, which was our big one to roll over to get to the bond sale, that was $12,000.
Because I don't see the bonds going down anytime soon.
Um, so I did revamp that, so that decreased, decreased cost of the budget. Um, the township had as many as four note sales and now we only have one in August. So that's positive. Um, we also introduced new timekeeping software. So in the past, we were doing paper time sheets. Um, the DPW is doing like the punch cards. Uh, we are not doing that anymore. We now have a centralized time sheet system. Um, that ensures that all the overtime is calculated correctly. Everything is done automatically in accordance with our UAW and ASME contracts. So things are done automatically. Um, there are a lot of caveats to the contracts, so we made sure that they were in there. So it doesn't take a ton of time to get through it. Um, so that increased efficiency and accuracy um, in the main building and at the DPW and ensures accurate time accrued, uh, which obviously affects our reserves. So we need to have time taken in calculation and to make sure that they're online with labor and rate, and labor and wage regulations as well as contractual obligations. So some trends and, some trends or concerns, um, trend on interest rates. So I originally wrote out here that they're still well, but I don't know if anybody heard, but the Fed's going to be increasing their rates. Um, they're anticipating, I believe, 2.75% by the end of the year. Um, so it obviously affects our short-term borrowing. They're still not up where they were. I don't know, 2010, 2011, so that's a positive. But anytime that there's an increase in the rate, it's going to affect the interest that we take out on debt. Uh, so I'm, I'm really happy that we did our bonding last year because that doesn't affect that $10 million. Obviously, we moved to one note cell a year. I said that too. Um, that's really it for my concerns as far as that goes. Finance, specific, thanks. Um, specific finance budget. So salaries and wages, uh, there are three union, union employees in my office with these steps. So these are contractual increases, 2% plus steps. Um, you no longer have. So originally last year, we had $20,000 in a permanent part-time salary. Um, I tried that for two years, have a permanent part-timer and they just left me. So, because it's part-time. Um, so what we did last year is my permanent part-timer left full-time position with the school. Um, and somebody was working part-time in the building, so we kind of.
merged.
merged, yes. We added an additional shared service with the MUA, um, so that time could be split between the MUA and the township. Which ensures that I have someone there now all the time. Purchasing takes a lot of time. Um, but I will say, when I came on, we had uh, three full-time employees. I now have two part, two full-time employees. And well, technically three, but it's like part-time finance. Um, when I first came on, we had somebody that was full-time doing all purchasing all day long and everything was done on paper. And if you know me, hate paper. Um, so we, she actually retired. Um, so at that retirement, I thought, okay, we're moving to electronics. So everything is done electronic with our purchasing. Um, it's approved at four different levels and there's been some questions about that too with our purchasing. So when people put in a requisition, that's to be approved by their department head, Chuck, our QPA and myself before a purchase order is even issued, they have to include all of their quote backup in the system. Um, the state threshold for quotes is $6,000. Our threshold for quotes is 1,000. So if you buy anything over $1,000, you have to provide at least three quotes. I see your face, yes. Um, we do that for a reason. Uh, Marcy kind of pointed it out. She treats the budget like her wallet. Um, I think it's important that people understand that when they're going to buy even pens, that if it was, you know, they're on mon- own money and it was cheaper at Staples versus WB Mason, it might be more comfortable by WB Mason, because it's what you do all the time. But if it was cheaper in Staples, it's good for Staples. Um, so I did increase that as well.
Never understood how state contract worked when you could go and buy something in the store.
Right.
For a dollar and, but if you buy it through state contract, you don't need to get a bid, but it'll cost you $3.
Yes. Yeah. Um, I also, when I came in, because I'm only explaining this so that you all know, um, our financial software, which was one of the lines in here um, for, where is it? Equipment rental maintenance. Um, we were running two financial software programs, so we were running MSI and Edmunds. Edmunds was for tax, MSI was for um, but yes, for purchasing finance, um, and the MUA sewer, which the township, it was part of that. So I came in and I was like, it's too much money. It was like $12,000 a year, it was something ridiculous. So, um, we went out for a seven-year uh, contract and Edmunds.